Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call to order this meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees on January 14th, 2021 at 5:03 PM. Due to health and safety concerns related to the COVID-19 coronavirus, this meeting will be conducted by video conference or telephone call. At least a quorum of the board will be participating in person by video conference or telephone conference in accordance with the provisions of Sections 551.125 or 551.127 of the Texas Government Code that have been suspended by order of the governor. All or some trustees and limited staff may be together while maintaining proper social distancing at Room 301A in the MacBurn Professional Development Center. Due to ongoing safety concerns, all open meeting proceedings will be live broadcast, but members of the public will be limited in the MacBurn Professional Development Center pursuant to state guidelines and regulations. And all persons will be required to comply with state and district guidelines and regulations. Members of the public may access this meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. The Board of Trustees on January 14th, 2021, beginning at 5:05 PM will convene in closed session pursuant to Sections 551.071 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act for the topics set forth on our agenda. We will reconvene in open meeting at approximately 6:15 PM. At this time, we will reconvene into open session this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for January 14th, 2021, beginning at 6:52 PM. We will start our meeting with the open ceremony. Please join Mr. Willbanks in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. We would ask that everyone here please silence your phones and electronic devices to avoid any disruptions. And now if you would please join me in a moment of silence. So, the first item on our agenda is programs and presentations. Our first presentation is for our Students of the Month. Our High School Students of the Month for January 2021, our Venture High School student, Jasmine Cook, and Newcomer Center student Evelyn Chavez. It is my honor to introduce Principal, Mr. Greg Meeks, who will share information for us. Mr. Meeks, good evening.
Good evening, President Mays, Dr. Cavassos and the board. It's an honor to be here this evening, probably one of the greatest days of the year us high school principals get to do. And I get the honor of announcing two students as I'm able to oversee the Newcomer Center and Venture High School. So first tonight, President Mays, I would like to introduce to everyone Evelyn Chavez. Evelyn is a newcomer student. She's a second-year student, a newcomer, immigrant student. And Evelyn has nearly 16 credits and she's a cohort 2023, and she's well on her way to do great things. Evelyn is a remote asynchronous learner, and Evelyn has been at pretty much every single Zoom learning session. She's had high levels of excellence in her classes, A-on a roll, every six weeks, even during a pandemic. And so it's my honor to introduce Evelyn. And Evelyn, we are going to present this, since you're an Asyncher, we're going to come to your home, and we're going to present this trophy to you. And we are honored that you're representing newcomers. So Evelyn, would you like to say a few words to President Mays and the board? Make sure you unmute. There you go.
Hello and thank you, President Mays, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos, for this opportunity to talk to you and represent Newcomer Center. My name is Evelyn, and I'm from Chihuahua, Mexico. My dad Everardo and my mom Maribel are joining me tonight. It's very important for me that they are here because it's thanks to them that I am the person I am today. I came to U.S. because my parents want to live together. You see, for 20 years, they were living apart because my father came to work here and only went to Chihuahua when he had money and could get time off. After all those years and a lot of hard work, he managed to become an American citizen. And now my family and I are American residents. Education has always been a priority in my family. When I lived in Chihuahua, school was far away, and I remember how hard it was to even get there. But for both my parents and I, it was working. My father didn't finish middle school, so he knew how hard it was complicated to get a job without graduating. So he didn't want that for me. When our feed got to newcomer, it sees me like everyone else knew English except for me. And because I wanted to do well, it stressed me so much that I cried and bit my nails. I didn't have friends. So when I don't know how to do my work, I didn't have anyone I could call to help. Over time, and with the support of some of my teachers, I was able to overcome. Made friends, raised my grades, and improved my English. A newcomer, we learn together since we are all new, and the teachers have a lot of patience when teaching us. It has been a great place for a person like me so that I can be prepared. In the future, a plan to be a radiologist, I decided that when I was 12 years old and I got very sick. I want to learn how to identify symptoms, explain anomalies, and get people the correct treatment to help them. The only thing that stands in my way is that college is expensive, so I know that I will need to continue to work hard to reach my goals. Thank you again for the honor of representing Newcomer Center and Arlington ISD.
Great job. President Mays, if I could introduce my second one, and then, but as I said earlier, Evelyn, that was amazing. Great story and amazing journey. The second student that we have, President Mays, is a Venture High School student, Jasmine Cook. Jasmine is a 2022 cohort. She's a 12th grade student. And as many people know, we have students who choose to come to Venture as a self-paced, blended learning type of program, even pre-COVID. And so during this time period, Jasmine decided to come to Venture as well. She is an asynchronous learner. It's interesting that both of our students are virtual learners. Jasmine had a few things come up in life, and she's an expectant, maybe already had her child. But nonetheless, Jasmine, there it is. There you go. And so she has made an amazing amount of credits since she has been at Venture. Her goal was to be done by December, but nonetheless, she only has two credits left. She will graduate a year, if not a year and a half early, and she can begin the next step of her journey. So Jasmine, would you like to unmute and share a little bit with President Mays and the board?
I don't know what to say. Her speech just beat the crap out of me. Ours was just amazing. It made me cry a little bit over here. But I don't really know what to say. Venture has helped a lot, really. Being pregnant and going through a lot as growing up, it helped me succeed. Like, I really thought I wasn't going to be able to graduate, but I'm graduating a year early, and I'm really proud of myself. Being in a young age and a senior, like, that's amazing. I'm sorry. But yeah. Thank y'all so much.
Jasmine, we will deliver this plaque to you as well, and we're proud of both Jasmine and Evelyn. And once again, President Mays, I appreciate y'all letting me nominate two students, one from each school, and we're just honored to be here tonight. Thank you, President Mays.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks. Jasmine, I just want to say to you, to see you sit there and the tears come out of your eyes and you're laughing, I think that's amazing because what that says is how happy and how proud that you are realizing what you're doing. And not only that, what an example you're setting for your child so early in life. So congratulations to you and keep working hard.
Thank you.
Evelyn, you said how proud you were to represent newcomers. How proud we are that you represent Arlington ISD. And I tell you what, you're talking, and I know you've got aspirations of what you want to do when you grow up, but man, did I hear journalist, some kind of a person leading a group of people talking in your future. So just congratulations to y'all, both for the hard work that you're doing and for the example that you're setting for so many of us. Congratulations.
Thank you again, President Mays. Evelyn and Jasmine, we can log off now. Thank y'all.
Thank you. I love those presentations. Okay, I love this next presentation as well. Our next presentation will be for Martin Luther King Celebration Art and Essay winners. I'd like to introduce Ms. Anita Foster, who will share information and introduce our winners.
Thank you, President Mays, members of the board. Dr. Cavassos, Happy New Year. Friday is going to kick off an exciting MLK four-day celebration. And joining us tonight to share all of the details are MLK Advancing the Dream chairpersons. We have Jennifer Whitman with us, the Deputy City Manager with the City of Arlington, and Lemuel Randolph, the Parks and Recreation Director with the City of Arlington. Welcome.
Thank you very much. We are really excited to be representing the MLK Committee this year. As you may or may not know, this 32-year-long-running event is a true collaboration of multiple agencies, including yourself, the city, UTA, TCC, and the Arlington Ministerial Association. And so we come to you from a variety of backgrounds to bring together what we believe is the most comprehensive MLK celebration in the country and certainly one of the longer-standing celebrations of MLK's legacy. Many months ago, and if we think in terms of COVID, before COVID, we came together as a committee to talk about what would be a good theme to operate from under this year. And we came up with the theme Unifying Our Nation. And it couldn't be more appropriate, given all of the things that have happened since COVID, since the George Floyd protest, and certainly the events of, despicable events of last week at the U.S. Capitol. So our goal through this four-day celebration is to help each and every one of us that takes, you know, part of our event to help unify our nation. And so we're really excited to present a variety of programming. Just like this meeting, we have gone to a completely virtual format, but it really provided a lot of opportunities to grow the programming, to really reimagine what this celebration could be. And so with that, Jennifer is going to kind of describe some of the activities in detail. We really appreciate your support for all of these years and your appreciation of the events that will unfold this weekend. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Lemuel. I'm so excited to be here with you tonight. As Lemuel said, it's been an honor to chair this year. Some of the great events that we have coming up are going to be tomorrow night. We're going to have the kickoff event. And so we get to honor the art and essay contest winners tonight, but they'll also be honored tomorrow night. And I have to say, I saw a preview of that show, and it's really going to be terrific. I hope that everyone can make some time to check that out. On Saturday morning, we'll have the traditional Step Show that we normally have. It'll be a little different. This year, we've added some drum lines, which will be terrific. And we're showing some Step Show performances from previous years. So that'll be wonderful. Saturday night, we have the Poetry Meets Jazz. Sunday evening is our Hubert Moss Equi-Medical Service, as we normally have. And then Monday, we'll have the celebration of volunteerism in the city and our nonprofits, and that'll happen on Monday morning, excuse me. And then all day Monday is going to be sort of a virtual day of service. We're encouraging everyone to pick their own service project in your own neighborhood, and that'll be great. And please share that on social media. But, oh, and I will say, please watch us. We're going to be on the city's website, on the cable channel, both U-verse Channel 99 and also Spectrum Channel 16. You can watch us on the Arlington MLK Facebook page and also on YouTube. If you search for us on YouTube, we've got a whole channel there. So if you have more, if you want more information, please go to www.ArlingtonMLK.com. That'll take you right to all the events. So I get the great honor of announcing all the terrific AISD students who have created both words and art this year that have been so amazing, that are a part of our event. So I'm going to announce the art contest winners first, I think, if that will work. So in first place, we have Stephanie Martinez from Bowie High School. And there's her wonderful piece of art. In second place, we have Corbin Jones from Seguin High School. And in third place, we have Kalissa Gordon Hay from Seguin High School as well. Lots of wonderful art in our schools. It's really amazing.
Nice.
Fantastic. And let's please honor all those students with some applause. So I'm going to announce the essay contest, the AISD students who've won the essay contest again. We have Rihanna Pinto in first place from Martin High School. And in third place, we have Alexis Nguyen from the Arlington Collegiate High School. So again, congratulations to those students. And Ms. Foster, please tell me if I messed up and was supposed to allow those students to speak. I see a lot of their faces here, and it's wonderful that they're with us. So we just want to back up and do that if that's the next step.
No, you're fine. What a great, just beautiful artwork. It's just powerful to see what the students can do. So Jennifer, thank you so much for your work, Mr. Randolph for your work, and everyone on the committee. It's going to be great. Tell us that website again, Jennifer.
Sure. If you go to ArlingtonMLK.com, that'll direct you to the website. You can also go to the city's website, ArlingtonTX.gov, and that'll take you. You can just search for MLK Celebration. That'll bring you to all the events. So we hope that people can join us.
Kicks off on Friday, right? So we'll be watching.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Our pleasure. Thank you all, and congratulations to everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. And thank you so much, Mr. Randolph, and to the committee for still making sure that even though it's going to be different this year, it is still happening, you're still involving the students, you're trying to bring in the community. Thank you very much for the work that y'all have put in to make sure that this still happens. And congratulations to our winners. I cannot wait to hear some of the essays over this weekend. And I must say, being able to watch it virtually, I love and I always never miss most of the activities, but definitely the Step Show. I always go, and you can't help but want to get up and say something or move. So now I'm at home, and I may just do some of the steps with the kids because nobody will be able to see me. So I'm so excited about that. So, so excited. But thank y'all very much, and once again, congratulations. Okay, presentations are fun. Okay, our next presentation is School Board Recognition. Ms. Foster, Ms. Anita Foster, please.
Yes, President Mays. It is School Board Recognition Month every year in January, and I'm not sure if there's been a year ahead of this one where recognition is more deserved. So we've got some great folks with us tonight. They're going to celebrate the theme Navigating to Success. So for us to show our appreciation, please welcome Lynn Nguyen, who's our Assistant Director of Fine Arts for Visual Arts. You have to follow that closely, right? We also have Bethan Woodard, our president, at Little Elementary School, and Erin Williams, the art teacher from Little Elementary.
Can you see me, Alex?
We can see you. So Lynn, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Anita. We are so honored and privileged tonight to be here to recognize our wonderful school board members. And this is a great tradition that has been going on for over 20-something years, where we select a school and students to create handcrafted artwork to present to our school board members. And we're so excited to have this year Little Elementary be the school that presents the artwork. So I'm excited to present Erin Williams, art teacher, to present the work tonight. Erin.
Good evening, President Mays, Dr. Cavassos, and members of the board. I am Erin Williams, the art teacher at Little Elementary. I was born and raised in Arlington. I went to Rankin, Hutch, and Samp Houston. I have been teaching for 11 years. This is my fifth year in Arlington. I want to say a quick thank you to my family, my fine arts team, the administration at Little Elementary for their encouragement and support to get through this school year. As we know, January is Board Recognition Month. Tonight is a time for us to pause our regular activity and say thank you to our dedicated volunteers for your willingness to serve as advocates for our students, staff, and our community of Arlington ISD. During this school year of 2021, we want to thank you for all that you do. We can't do what we do each day without you guys. We are lucky in Arlington to have a board to see the values and the importance of what we do as educators. In selecting the art students for this project, I chose eight students who have shown determination, creativity, and hard work. I have watched each one of these students grow in many ways. My students and I are happy for their opportunity to bring to life this year's theme, Navigating to Success. In their art pieces, we have used a variety of techniques and mediums to tell their stories. They use watercolor, colored pencils, temper paint, and drawing skills as part of their process, like master artists in history. As one of my students says, she is using the experience to reach her goals for the future. Each one of my students have created a piece of work that has shown their way of navigating to success. I am happy to present these works of art from these talented sixth graders. First up for Mr. Chappa from Connor. Connor's goal for sixth grade is to make good grades and to pass seventh grade. He wants to be a YouTuber and make stop-motion videos when he grows up. For Mrs. Fowler, Tanya. Tanya's goal for her sixth grade year is to get 100 juggles in soccer to be and be a better sister. When she is 14, her dad is going to take her to the USA Nations Team Soccer Camp because that's one of her dreams, to be on the national soccer team. If it doesn't work out, then she wants to be a pediatrician. For Mr. Hogg from Cho. Cho's goal for her sixth grade is to finish with all As. She wants to be a doctor that can help the people with disabilities to set them back and find solutions for them to do the impossible. For Dr. Cavassos from Caitlin. Caitlin's goal for her sixth grade year is to finish her year with all As, and she would like to be a vet when she grows up. For President Mays from Sophie. Sophie's goal for her sixth grade year is to make everyone happy. When she grows up, she wants to be a designer. For Mrs. Walton from Adam. Adam's goal is to be a, for sixth grade year, he wants to learn as much as possible and to be ready for seventh grade. When he grows up, he wants to study law, become a lawyer, and one day be a judge. For Dr. Rice from Caleb. Caleb's goal is to finish sixth grade and have a normal school year next year, and he wants to be an engineer when he grows up. For Mr. Willbanks from Mito. Mito's goal for sixth grade is to pass with all good grades and have a good mindset. He is not sure what he wants to be when he grows up. Once again, we want to thank you for all that you do from the bottom of our hearts for helping us navigate to success.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you very much, Ms. Williams, for working with these students. Students, thank you so much for the pictures. Thank you so much for taking time out of your schedule to tell us what you want to be when you grow up, what your goals are for now, and for providing something that will make each and every one of us smile. Thank you very much to Little Elementary. Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. It's good to see you. And we really appreciate. I know we've been receiving emails, videos. We're so appreciative of all the people that are taking their time out to just say thank you and appreciate the work that we're doing. It really does mean a lot, and especially from our students, because we're doing it for you. So thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Foster. Okay. Well, that completes our program and presentation part of the agenda. Next on the agenda is appointments. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Mays, and I'd like to recommend that the board ratify the appointment of the individual discussed in closed session for Assistant Principal for Bowie High School.
Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, an approval. A motion made by Mr. Hogg, a second by Mrs. Fowler. Are there any questions? Seeing none, please vote. Since this meeting is being conducted virtually, our vote will be done. Roll call. So please state your name and your vote, either yes if you are in favor of, or no if you are not in favor of the motion. Dr. Rice.
Erin Rice, I vote yes.
Mr. Willbanks.
David Willbanks, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton.
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Mr. Hogg.
Bowie Hogg, I vote yes.
Ms. Fowler.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Mr. Chappa.
Justin Chappa, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes. Vote passes in the affirmative for our administrative appointment.
Thank you, President Mays. And the individual that was appointed is Gabriel Baldwin. He's the new Assistant Principal for Bowie High School. Gabriel attended the University of Texas at Austin for Bachelor of Arts in American Studies and Economics, a university in Longview for Master of Education. Most recently, was a pre-AP and on-level math teacher at Mansfield ISD, and has been a pre-AP teacher at Barnett Junior High as well here in Arlington. Congratulations to Gabriel Baldwin.
Welcome, Mr. Baldwin, to AISD. Okay, next on our agenda is open forum for agenda items. I'm sorry, is public hearings. For Texas Academic Performance Report, our Tapper, Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Mays. And this evening, we bring for public hearing and presentation the Tapper Report. And I'll turn this over to Dr. Barlow to make a presentation about what Tapper is and the highlights of our Tapper Report for Arlington ISD. Dr. Barlow.
Thank you, President Mays, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos. So this is our annual report. We used to do this in January of our Tapper Report, the Texas Academic Performance Report. And so what I'll do tonight, we'll do it a little bit differently. And so what I'll do tonight, we'll do it a little bit differently. We changed the process just a little bit here. Well, I'll go through the full deck, and then Ms. Moss and I will be available to answer any questions at the end of the presentation. So I will say that this will probably be the shortest TAPER report that I've ever done over the last 20 years. Reason being is that the majority of it is academic data for the spring of 2020. And we have none. So we'll do a couple of brief slides on that, and then we'll hit some attendance data and graduation data and a little bit of finance data. So again, let me see if I can go ahead and get this in the, there we go. So what is the TAPER report? The TAPER report describes the educational performance of a district and each campus in the district. It's intended to inform the public about the educational performance of the district and of each campus in relation to the district, the state, and a comparable group of schools. The TAPER report measures district performance, district progress, prior year and student succession initiative, district participation. Of course, all of those deal with testing. And so we won't have very much of that tonight. We'll make a couple of comments and move past that here in just a minute. We do have some attendance, graduation, and dropout data. You also have college career military readiness, student information, and staff information. Basically, for 2020, all districts and campuses are labeled not rated, declared state of disaster for 2020 because of COVID-19. But as you know, last year, we didn't do any testing. There was no accountability. So we don't really have anything to present on assessment data for spring of 2020. As we move into the spring of 2021, accountability for 2021, again, there's, will not be issued any ratings for the spring of 2021. However, there still will be some state assessments throughout the spring, mainly so that we can understand the progress that students are making throughout the school year. So this is actually probably a good move for us with respect to not having the pressure of accountability, but also collecting some data just so that we can understand how our students are progressing through the last spring and also into this year with respect to the pandemic. So again, district accountability rating, basically, we were not rated. You can see all those domains there. We've talked about those quite extensively the last couple of years. Domain one, two A, two B, and three, no data there, and then no distinction. So we'll move into attendance rate. So notice at the bottom of this slide there, we have attendance rate for 2018 and 2019. So this is still before the pandemic hit. If you recall, attendance rate and graduation rate, those type of data are always a year behind. But we haven't seen the effect of that with respect to what's happened with the pandemic. So if you just scan across the bottom row there, you'll notice that on the attendance rate, we didn't really have any change from 18 to 19 for all students. Most of the other areas were within 0.1, 0.2 percent. Remember, when we look at our American Indians and our Pacific Islanders, those numbers vary quite a bit, just because those populations are so small. So just a few students here or there can move those numbers quite a bit. Our four-year graduation rates, this is from 2018, 2019 again. This has not been affected by the pandemic yet. We'll see those data next year. Again, when we look at the all-students category there, going, again, scanning across that bottom row, the all-students category, we had a 0.1 percent increase for all students. And then you'll see some variation there as you go. I'll hit a couple of those. African-American, a loss of 1.2. Hispanic, a gain of 1.4. And then when we get over to sped economic disadvantage in ELL, 3.1, 1.9, and 4.4. So those are some gains, some nice gains there in those student groups. You may remember that, you may recall that the four-year dropout rate is kind of the inverse of that. And so on this, we actually want to see those numbers go down. So again, scanning across the bottom row there, this is from 18 to 19. These are almost the inverse of what we saw on the previous slide. A little bit of a bump there with all students. And then African-American, an increase of 0.7. Hispanic, down 0.7. And then again, when you go over to that sped economic disadvantage in ELL, you can see those numbers there that are almost the exact inverse of what we saw on the previous slide. A negative 3.1, negative 0.7, and a negative 3.3, which is good for those groups. The five-year graduation, again, this is going back with the 17, 18 group. So an increase there with all students, 1.4. African-American, 3.0. And then when you go over to that sped economic disadvantage in ELL group, it's kind of up and down there with the economic disadvantage being a positive 1.4. Again, the five-year dropout rate, almost the inverse of that again. All students, a negative 1.1. African-American, a negative 2.4. And Hispanics, down 0.5. So those are good. And then when you go over to those other three groups, that's kind of highlighting there the sped economic disadvantage, ELL. You can see there, again, it's kind of up and down depending on the group there with the economic disadvantage down 1.2. We move in, out of graduation and attendance data, move into student data. So we've had this slide the last couple of years with respect to just a little bit of an idea of what our student population looks like. With our, we do a little bit of a comparison here between the district and the state. AISD has 50,453 students in membership. And you can see the state there at about 5 million, about 5 million and a half there. If we scan down the distribution of those, African-American at 25 percent, Hispanic 40, almost 47 percent, white 18.7 percent or almost 19 percent. And then we have some smaller percentages in some of those other areas with the two or more races being at 2.8 percent there at the bottom. Economically disadvantaged, 72.1 percent compared to the 60.3. You may recall that the economic disadvantage number is a very important part of the accountability system now. When we do have accountability, you can literally move your accountability rating just by an increase in economic disadvantage percentages in the district. So if that 72.1 were to go up, that actually has a, would have a positive effect on accountability if everything else was held the same. Or if it went down, it could actually have a negative effect on our accountability. And then you can see the ELL students at not 29 percent and at risk at 66.6 percent. This is just a graphical of that. The numbers are basically the same. It just gives you kind of a graphical or pictorial view of that. With there again, that Hispanic being at 46.9 percent, the largest group. Staff data, just a couple of points here. We look at our staff data. We have the 8,072 compared to the number there for the state, 734,000. But I think the key indicators there are teachers and central administration. This always becomes kind of a point of conversation. Do we have more, are we top-heavy where we have a lot of central administration? You can see that, be here by these numbers that compared to the state, we do, we don't. We're at 50 percent teachers in the district, and the state is just a little bit below that. And in central administration, it's just kind of the opposite of that, where we're about 0.4 percent, and the district's at 1.1 percent. So not top-heavy there. Teachers are right at 50 percent of the staff. 14.7 students per teacher compared to the 15.1 at the state level. So that gives us more teachers for our students. And then you can see there, the average experience of teachers, just a little higher than the state in both those categories. Overall, when you look at instructional staff percentage, 64.3 percent dedicated to instruction. And then the state level is 64.6. So state's a little bit above us on there. We look at operating expenditures, again, comparing expenditures to instruction. When we look at the total operating expenditures per student, 9,567 compared to the state of 9,913. So we're just a little bit under that what the state has. Our instruction makes up a 5613, $5,613 there. So you can see we dedicate more dollars there towards that instruction than the state does. And then when you go down to general administration, again, there, kind of that comparison between what's happening in the classroom and in administration, we're spending about $174 there per student compared to the state at $322. This is the same type of data here, but just in percentages. Instruction there is 58.7 percent, a little bit above the state there, 56.1. And then that general administration that I pointed out on the previous slide, 1.8 percent, which is lower than the state at 3.3 percent. And then the final slide here, when we just compare our AISD to the state with respect to instructional expenditure ratio, we're at 59.8 percent versus the state at 57.2 percent, so a little above them. And then in unassigned general fund balance, as a percent of the budget, we have 36.4 compared to the state of 28.0. And I think we provided, when we sent that to the board, the presentation, we also provided some other documents there that support those, support those slides. I'm going to stop there and then see if you have any questions, and we'll try to answer any questions that you have.
Questions? Okay, I do not see any questions. I'm glad that you did have some information to provide us with stats, because Dr. Barlow and no stats is like cereal and no milk. So I'm so glad we got to hear you still present some stats. So, Ms. Benjamin, do we have any registered speakers?
No, ma'am, we have no registered speakers for this portion.
Okay. We have no registered speakers, so the public hearing on Texas Academic Performance Report is now closed.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Dr. Barlow.
Thank you.
So now, in the agenda, we come to our open forum for agenda items. As stated on the posted agenda, members of the public who desire to address the board regarding an item on this agenda are required to register by sending an email to the Superintendent of School Secretary, no later than 3:00 PM the day of the board meeting. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding agenda items?
Yes, ma'am, we have one registered speaker for agenda items, open forum, Ms. Christina Blank.
Okay. Ms. Blank, this is a routine part of the school board's agenda for regularly scheduled meetings. This segment of the meetings provides citizens with an opportunity to share their views with the trustees on items that are on the agenda tonight. It is not intended to be a discussion or a debate, and trustees will not reply to speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. Personnel matters are not appropriate subjects for open forum. You will have five minutes to speak. Mrs. Benjamin will notify you when your time is up. And at that time, please end your presentation. Your time starts now, Ms. Blank.
Well, I would just like to say I miss you all very much. This is, I miss being in the same room with you. I'd like to start off by saying thank you very much, Madam President, the board, and of course, Dr. Cavassos, for allowing me to speak. This is, I wanted to speak about school board appreciation. And especially this year, you guys deserve a huge thanks. This month, it's School Board Appreciation Month, obviously. And this year, we always come and talk to you and let you know how much we appreciate everything you do for our staff. This year especially, though, we've had multiple challenges that are just unprecedented. Our school board here in Arlington ISD goes above and beyond supporting teachers and staff if they have to be quarantined with COVID. Not many districts around us are doing as much as we are here, and that is much thanks to you. This applies not only to teachers, but all staff. This helps to build a lot of security and peace of mind with the staff in Arlington in this troubled time and allows us to better help our children, which is really why we're all here. As we go forward into this legislative session and budget season, I know you guys are going to continue down the path for financial support and items to help strengthen our district so that we can continue to have that peace of mind here in Arlington. I thank you so much for all the work you have done for this district and for all the work you will go through for the rest of the year and the plans for next year. I do not envy you all this hard work, but I stand here ready to help and support this fabulous team, our Arlington School Board. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. And that's my time. I miss you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Blank, for those kind words. We really appreciate it. Okay, next on our agenda are several action items. Our first action item is consider order of election for school board. So we have an order of election. I do need a motion to call a trustee election on May 1st, 2021. Do we have a motion?
President Mays, I have a motion. If you can hear me?
Yeah.
You ready? I move that the board call a general election to be held on Saturday, May 1st, 2021 for the purpose of electing members of the Board of Trustees of the Arlington Independent School District to fill place numbers one, two, and three.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second? Okay, motion by Mr. Hogg, is second by Mr. Willbanks. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will do our roll call vote. Dr. Rice?
Erin Rice, I vote yes.
Mr. Willbanks?
David Willbanks, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton?
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Mr. Hogg?
Bowie Hogg, I vote yes.
Mrs. Fowler?
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Mr. Chappa?
Justin Chappa, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes. The motion passes in the affirmative. I will now read the order of election. A general election is hereby ordered to be held Saturday, May 1st, 2021 for the purpose of electing members of the Board of Trustees of the Arlington Independent School District to fill place numbers one, two, and three. The main early voting polling site for all voters residing in the Arlington Independent School District, including the portion of the district that lies within the city of Arlington, the city of Del Worthington Gardens, the Tarrant County portion of the city of Grand Prairie, and the town of Pantigo, will be the following location. Tarrant County Election Center, 2700 Premier Street, Fort Worth, Texas, 76111. Between the hours of 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, beginning April 19th, 2021, through April 23rd, 2021. And between the hours of 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM on Saturday, April 24th. And between the hours of 11:00 AM and 4:00 PM on Sunday, April 25th, 2021. And between the hours of 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM on Monday and Tuesday, April 26th and April 27th, 2021. Applications for a ballot by mail for voters residing in the Arlington Independent School District shall be mailed to early voting clerk, P.O. Box 961011, Fort Worth, Texas, Or an email transmission of a completed scanned application for a ballot by mail containing an original signature can be emailed to votebymail@terrentcounty.com. Note, effective December 1st, 2017, if an application for ballot by mail is submitted by fax or email, the original application must also be mailed and received by the early voting clerk no later than the fourth business day after receipt of the faxed or emailed copy. Applications for a ballot by mail must be received no later than the close of business on Tuesday, April 20th, 2021. The order of election may be amended at a later date to include early voting sites added or deleted due to joint elections with other political subdivisions. Issued this 14th day of January, 2021. Okay, our next action item is consider amending the commercial contract. Improve property for the acquisition of real property with improvements described as approximate 1.73 acres. Improve tract of land on Lot 31A and 31B of the John Stevens Edition in Arlington, Texas of Tarrant County, Texas locally known as 1500 South Cooper Street, Arlington, Texas.
President Mays, and we have shared this with our finance committee as well and have vetted that out. And so we recommend approval of this contract amendment.
Okay. Do I have a motion? Mr. Chappa?
Thank you, President Mays. At this time, I move that the board approve the amendment to the purchase contract for the property locally known as 1500 South Cooper Street in Arlington, Texas.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, the motion by Mr. Chappa, a second by Ms. Fowler. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will roll call vote. Dr. Rice?
Erin Rice, I vote yes.
Mr. Willbanks?
David Willbanks, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton?
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Mr. Hogg?
Bowie Hogg, I vote yes.
Ms. Fowler?
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Mr. Chappa?
Justin Chappa, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes. Motion passes in the affirmative. Our next action item is consider approving the sale of real property being a part of Block 4 of Phase 4 Sheffield Village in addition to the city of Grand Prairie, Tarrant County, Texas, as it appears upon the platte recorded in volume 399-190, page 83. As it appears upon the plat recorded in volume 399-190, page 83 of the plat records of Tarrant County, Texas, and embracing all of the 10-acre tract described in the deed to Arlington Independent School District, recorded in volume 12,379, page 578 of the deed of records of Tarrant County, Texas, in the south right-of-way line of Barden Road situated in the John Moody Survey abstract number 1007 locally known as 2901 West Barden Road or the southeast corner of the intersection of Barden Road and Magna Carter Avenue in Grand Prairie, Texas, compromising, comprising approximately 10 acres. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mason. This item as well has been reviewed by our finance committee and we recommend the approving the sale of this property.
Do I have a motion?
Ms. Mays, at this time, I move that the board approve the sale of the property locally known as 2901 West Barden Road in Grand Prairie and is legally described in our agenda in action item C.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Wilbanks, second by Mrs. Fowler. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will roll call vote. Dr. Reich?
Aaron Reich, I vote yes.
Mr. Wilbanks?
David Wilbanks, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton?
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Mr. Hogg?
Boogie Hogg, I vote yes.
Mrs. Fowler?
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Mr. Chapa?
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
And Keisha Mays, I vote yes. Motion passes in the affirmative. Our next action item is consider the sale and a resolution to approve the sale of delinquent tax property, approximately .3135 acres described as Lot 10, East Daggett Edition located in the city of Arlington, Tarrant County, Texas, and located within the Arlington ISD as shown by a deed of record in volume 6167, page 535 of the deed of records of Tarrant County, Texas, also known as 1127 West Abram Street, Arlington, Texas. Do I have, Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mason, as well with this delinquent property tax, we've reviewed with our finance committee and we recommend that sale as well.
Okay, do I have a motion?
President Mason, I move the board approve the sale of the delinquent tax property locally known as 1127 West Abram Street, Arlington, Texas.
Do I have a second? Ms. Walton, so we have a motion by Dr. Reich, a second by Ms. Walton. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will roll call vote. Dr. Reich?
Aaron Reich, I vote yes.
Mr. Wilbanks?
David Wilbanks, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton?
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Mr. Hogg?
Boogie Hogg, I vote yes.
Mrs. Fowler?
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Mr. Chapa?
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes. Motion passes in the affirmative. Our next action item, consider sale and a resolution to approve the sale of delinquent tax properties totaling approximately 4.01 acres, more or less, out of a 5.7 acre tract of land in abstract 750 Tapley-Holland Survey to Tarrant County, Texas, as shown by deed of record in volume 2883, page 145, and volume 5261, page 969, of the deed of records of Tarrant County, Texas, also known as 2502, 2506, 2520, and 2580 West Jefferson Street in Grand Prairie, Texas. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mason, as well. This property has been discussed with the finance committee and we recommend the sale of this one as well.
Do I have a motion?
Yes, Madam President. I move that the board approve the sale of delinquent tax properties located known as 2502, 2506, 2520, and 2580 West Jefferson Street, Grand Prairie, Texas.
Do I have a second?
Okay, a motion by Mrs. Walton, a second by Mrs. Fowler. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will roll call vote. Dr. Reich?
Aaron Reich, I vote yes.
Mr. Wilbanks?
David Wilbanks, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton?
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Mr. Hogg?
Boogie Hogg, I vote yes.
Mrs. Fowler?
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Mr. Chapa?
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes. Motion passes in the affirmative. Our next action item is consider extending temporary amendment to policy DEC local, including paid leave previously authorized by the Family First Coronavirus Response Act. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mason. We bring this item tonight for board consideration. We have also covered this with our governance committee as well. But we bring this item for consideration to extend the benefits that were related to the federal COVID leave, if you will. And those include paid leave if individuals acquire COVID. As you know, the federal COVID leave expired December 31st, and we are recommending to the board tonight that we continue those benefits through the rest of this school year with the continuity of our support for our employees. And so this board has been very clear about making sure that we do everything possible to mitigate the spread of COVID in our schools with strict protocols and adherence to those things. This is one more step to continue that mitigation and allow there to be some COVID leave benefit that the federal government had that has since expired and through this resolution, you would allow that. So we recommend the approval of this resolution.
Okay. Do I have a motion? I will approve of this resolution? Or did somebody else have that one? I'm sorry, Ms. Walton. Mr. Chapa? I'm sorry.
Thank you, President Mason. I have a motion to just like to say a quick statement first, and Dr. Cavassos has it exactly right. We have been very clear throughout the pandemic that we would like to reduce the burden on our staff members that this really unprecedented situation has caused. And what we are doing through this resolution is authorizing the district to pick up as a local expenditure those things that were previously provided by the federal government, even though that funding has ended. So we are trying to do right by our staff members, even though we don't have an obligation to do so anymore and even some partial funding from federal funds anymore. So commend Dr. Cavassos for bringing this need to our attention and the governance committee for reviewing it and recommending approval of it. So at this time, I would move to adopt the resolution to extend the temporary amendment to policy DEC local, including paid leave previously authorized by the Family First Coronavirus Response Act, FFCRA, and that the resolution be attached to the minutes.
Do I have a second? Ms. I have a second.
I apologize for stepping on everybody's.
We have a motion by Mr. Chapa and a second by Ms. Walton. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote roll call. Dr. Reich?
Aaron Reich, I vote yes.
Mr. Wilbanks?
David Wilbanks, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton?
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Mr. Hogg?
Boogie Hogg, I vote yes.
Mrs. Fowler?
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Mr. Chapa?
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes. Motion passes in the affirmative. Thank you to the governance committee as well. Our next action item is consider 2020/21 educator appraisal waiver. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mason. This evening, we bring for your consideration, back in that spirit of adaptability and the spirit of support for our staff and our employees, consideration for a waiver that was made available late December for our consideration by TEA, and we bring it forward tonight, and it's the educator appraisal waiver. And it's similar to what we did last year, which is to waive the T-test appraisal for teachers. We know that under this environment, they're doing virtual hybrid in-class, and that presents challenges. And while the T-test is an important evaluation tool, and it is a robust one, it wasn't designed to be implemented necessarily in a virtual environment. And so, similar to last year, we are recommending that the board approve that waiver for educator appraisals. And I think Dr. Brown, if she's on the Zoom, has a brief presentation regarding this waiver because it does have some detail, but Dr. Brown?
Yes, sir. Thank you, President Mays, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos. Thank you for the opportunity to share information about this request for a waiver. So we did, of course, want to make sure that we were able to gather stakeholder input before making a decision about requesting this waiver. And as Dr. Cavassos mentioned, the state recently, mid-December, gave us the opportunity to apply for a waiver, and they gave us several options that we might be able to tap into. And one is to waive the requirement to include a rating on the teacher's impact on a student growth goal, and we call that SLO. And so one of the challenges with that is in this environment that we're in, we did hear from some teachers that it might be challenging to have accurate data to determine the teacher's impact on student growth during this environment that we're in. Another option is to waive all general teacher appraisal requirements associated with T-test, which is what Dr. Cavassos referenced we did last year. T-PAS is another evaluation instrument, and this is what we use to evaluate principals and assistant principals in Arlington. And with T-PAS, the only part that we are able to request a waiver is the student growth measure. So we also measure teacher impact on student growth and principal impact on student growth. And so our combination waiver that we are seeking is to waive all general teacher appraisal requirements and the T-PAS component that relates to the student growth indicator. So again, teachers have been getting observed, they've gotten observations, they've gotten feedback from principals during the course of the year. They will continue to be observed and provided feedback as well. And again, as I mentioned, we do seek to waive that T-PAS component for growth measure and partly because of the challenges with measuring growth. Again, our principals and assistant principals will continue to observe and support instruction. And if we are waiving, if it's approved that we can waive all the T-test requirements for teachers, we are going to still ask for an end-of-the-year performance discussion. And this is something that will be between the administrator and the teacher, just to reflect on the year, challenges, opportunities, and then help begin identifying goals for '21, '22. So our recommendation is that the board approve the submission of a waiver to eliminate all requirements related to T-test appraisals and the growth indicator for T-PAS. Happy to take any questions that you all might have.
Are there any questions from trustees? Yes, Mr. Hogg?
Yeah, thank you, President Mason. And Ms. Brown, I fully agree with this, and I think it's the right decision. What does this do in future years? Like, does this have any, and we missed it last year, this year, does that cause issues? You know, let's say two years down the road. I'm not saying, listen, I think we should do it no matter what, but I still am thinking farther. Our job is to think multiple years out.
Yeah, so there are multiple ways to provide feedback to employees. T-test is one way. There are other ways to provide that feedback. The state understands that the waiver process for this is that opportunity, and they have also kind of figured into their calculation what it does. Probably, Mr. Hogg, the place where it would have some potential implication would be with House Bill 3 and the incentive allotment for teachers that allows districts to incentivize teacher performance, et cetera. And, but where we are in that cohort process, we are in an ISD because it's cohorted based on grant cycles and things like that. And where we are, we've verified that we would still be eligible when our time comes, and it's not tomorrow, even if we didn't have the appraisal this year. Dr. Brown, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
Yes, the only thing I would add, Dr. Cavassos, since it's a great question, is that principals and administrators are continuing to observe classrooms, provide feedback to teachers, just to continue to help grow their practice. So again, the coaching and feedback cycles do continue with or without T-test, and so they're still able to engage in that.
And Ms. Brown, let me add, listen, the last thing we need is TEA requiring us to do things. And if whether it's T-test, we're going to have some type of evaluation that we do. Is this something we should be pushing the legislature more on to not have the T-test requirement and having a very regulated form from Austin of what we have to do? Because now we're going to be in two years of a waiver on this. So it's kind of like with standardized testing. I think we're proving, hey, Austin, we don't have to have these things from you. We still can function and do very well. That's probably a little bit where my question's going.
Yeah, no, and that's a great question. And with the disruption that's occurred during this time, you know, there are some potential silver linings. And one of them, in this context, is to see, is the whole instrument necessary? Is it necessary every year? Can there be some kind of staggered effect? I think that requires a little more, you know, in-depth study from staff, but I do think it's that opportunity. Now, the instrument itself is strong, and it's better than what we've had in a number of years, just to be clear and fair to the development of the T-test, which is why we use it. But I do think it has that room for examination of, is it every year necessary and should we stagger some of that? Absolutely.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Dr. Brown or Dr. Cavassos? Just kind of off of Mr. Hogg's question, if we're seeing in the future, there's been talk from different districts, you know, people speaking about can there or will there be some ways of continued virtual learning in the future based off of what we've been doing now? So do we see either the legislature or some of the school districts trying to think of other ways of having these appraisals done? Because just because it's virtual, to me, wouldn't be a reason to stop, particularly if we're thinking of continuing that at some level for some districts throughout the state or that the state itself needs to find some way to maybe change up the way that the evaluations are now so that they would be able to handle them in virtual situations. Are we hearing any information about that moving forward?
Yeah, so combination of answers, I think, on that, and that is, in terms of whether we'll be allowed to do virtual next year is an open question by TEA. They haven't said yes, actually. And if you do, it may be with a lot of different rules. But to your point, when we change the environment, then it makes sense to change the tool to adapt to the environment. And that's what hasn't happened yet with T-test to some extent. And so if we're looking at virtual instruction and what best ways to evaluate that, what best ways to evaluate the engagement of students, well, this is a big baseline year. There is no baseline for how do you engage in a Zoom virtually over a long period of time. And that's very challenging for teachers, very challenging for students and families, but also challenging for teachers. If we're going to try to assess that, and I say we, the collective, we of school districts, then we have to benchmark those things and find ways to assess effort and engagement and things like that, as one example. But to your point, Ms. Mays, it has not been supplemented to adapt to the current environment at this time.
Okay, we catch up with that and have some discussions with TEA and our legislatures. Are there any other questions? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion?
President Mason, before I make the motion, I would just like to say how proud I am of the board for making this decision and wanting this waiver. The teachers have had so much on their plates since March, and I think this will help knowing that there's not one more thing that they're being asked to do or getting ready for or have to worry about. So I am so pleased about this. All right. I move to adopt the resolution to seek a 2020/2021 educator appraisal waiver from TEA and that the resolution be attached to the minutes.
Do I have a second? Dr. Reich? We have a motion by Mrs. Fowler, a second by Dr. Reich. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will roll call vote. Dr. Reich?
Aaron Reich, I vote yes.
David Wilbanks, I vote yes.
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Boogie Hogg, I vote yes.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes. Motion passes in the affirmative. Our next action item is consider revision of AISD asynchronous plan to request a waiver to schedule periodic, non-consecutive, asynchronous instructional days during the spring of 2020 and 2021. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mason. This is another opportunity that through waiver, the TEA surfaced in late December to allow school districts to waive some of the minute requirements and provide for asynchronous days so teachers can plan and learn and things like that and catch up, quite frankly. And so this waiver opportunity allows for one day a month for that to occur. And so we bring that forward as a consideration as in the spirit of supporting teachers to plan and develop and make sure we can continue as we go through this spring semester. So Dr. Brown has a brief presentation about the specifics of this waiver as well. Dr. Brown?
Thank you, sir. So I just wanted to share a couple of tidbits about this particular waiver and then share our recommendation with you, Board of Trustees. So the districts can So the districts can apply for, districts can apply for a waiver that we basically can have asynchronous, revise our asynchronous plan, excuse me, to be able to include non-consecutive asynchronous days for our students. And so we can request up to 2,100 minutes in the spring semester. Right now, our school day consists of about 435 minutes. So if we apply for four asynchronous days, we will be well under the 2,100-minute threshold. So TEA does ask that if we do have students who have bad internet access or don't have a learning device at home, that we would allow them the space to be able to come to the building for instruction. We feel pretty good about our students and where they are with hotspots and the devices that we've issued. However, we still have opportunities if there is a need for our students during these asynchronous days. And what TEA has outlined is that these asynchronous days can be used as teacher preparation days, can be used as planning days, so it could be individual planning or department planning or team planning, as well as professional development or just to focus on student engagement. For professional development as a system, we had a conversation about just asking if it is professional development, the teachers are doing that individually. So for example, if I'm a teacher and I still have to complete my reading academy modules, that's going to be a great time for me to be able to engage in that learning, as well as student engagement. So if we have some students, for example, who are failing, that the principal might ask teachers to reach out directly to those parents, that could be a day for them to catch up with parents as well. And so those are a few components of this particular waiver that we are applying for. So during asynchronous day, students will be expected to log in, as usual, to seesaw or canvas during that day. They will have lessons that are already loaded, so it will not be a day off for students or teachers. Everyone will be working, and attendance will be taken for those students on those asynchronous days. The second part of that is principals will provide expectations for teachers during that day. And that just means, in essence, this is your planning day. It's the last day of the six weeks. We want you just to plan, spend the whole day catching up, making sure grades are together, whatever is outlined during that particular day. And then for support staff, we know we have a ton of support staff who are on the campuses, and so principals will be working with them to determine what their work looks like on those particular asynchronous instruction days. So here are the proposed days that we have done some brainstorming around, and of course, these could change. We've not cemented this, of course. We're proposing one day in February, which is the 12th, which is the last day of the six weeks, a day in March, March 8th, a Monday, April, April 1st, which is a Thursday, and May 10th, which is a Monday. We knew that it was important also for our high school students that we had a combination of A-B days, so we would not take too many A-days or B-days from our high school teachers as well. So the administration recommends the board approve the submission of a waiver to schedule these periodic, non-consecutive asynchronous instructional days during the spring of 2021. Happy to take any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions from trustees? Yes, Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Mays. I noticed that we are, so we're requesting, based on minutes, there might have been one more day that we could get in there, and I'm assuming the reason that we didn't, we're not using that probably for January is just the time, you know, to notify parents of what day we're going to do this and give enough lead time for folks to adjust their schedules, right? Is that my understanding correct?
And we've already had a workday in January as well, Mr. Chapa, and that's another yes, and we've had a workday already in January.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to make sure that that was my understanding, just to make that clear.
Yes.
That's all I have.
Okay, any other questions?
Ms. Mays, let me ask a question. I know our intention, and Dr. Cavassos, we've talked about this a little bit, our intention of this is to give it for the teachers to be able to utilize. I just want to make it very clear, that is the goal. You know, you hear sometimes, oh, we're supposed to do this. One of the best changes we made was the days before school starts, we're dedicating days for teachers to get set up and situated. I just want to make it very clear, that is the intention of this. There is flexibility if something changes, but that is the intention of this by this board. Is that correct and by administration?
Yeah, that is the intention. And the only footnote I would add to that is that, as everything during this pandemic, so many things change. And so to predict April and May and what that day will look like, but the intent is what you described, Mr. Hogg. Ms., Dr. Brown, if you want to add anything to that? You've been working on this waiver as well.
No, nothing else to add, Dr. Cavassos. That is the initial intent of this. We know that TEA does outline that professional development could be a part of that. We did not think it was necessary for our teachers to be pulled into PD during those school days. However, they could work on anything individually they needed to take care of. And so again, primarily for teachers to be able to, as Dr. C said, catch up. And there may be some other things that principals will ask them to do, reaching out to parents, et cetera, brief staff meeting, but nothing that's going to take the entire day.
And I appreciate it, and I know as a board, we've been, I think we've all been asking for, how do we hear this? Because we hear this from our staff members, and I commend district staff for being on the forefront of districts of realizing, hey, TEA kind of threw this out there, and from what I know, I don't think any other district is fully taking advantage of this yet. So I commend our staff for finding a way to meet some of the needs of what we've been hearing from teachers and we've been asking for. So I think this is a good decision.
Any other questions? Yes, Dr. Reich?
Completely agree with everything Mr. Hogg stated. Just a clarification also that for the teachers, this can be virtual remote as well, right? It's.
Yeah, so that's our intent, and Dr. Brown, you may want to address that, but that it would be similar to our January 4th, which allows it to be virtual or on campus. And while we allowed that flexibility January 4th, many teachers decided to come on campus. That's their choice, because that's where they have their resources and material, and that's fine. Our campuses are open and administration is there. But yeah, that's our intent, is to start off that way. Again, I have to footnote it, because if something happens in May and April that we don't anticipate today, we may have to change that, but that's how we're starting, that it's virtual. Dr. Brown, anything you want to add to that?
Just that's correct, Dr. Cavassos, and the teachers have proven time and time again, they do really good work even from home, so it's not been a challenge for us.
Thank you.
Ms. Mays, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Wilbanks?
First of all, I'd like to echo what my colleagues have said. Everyone knows the tremendous burden that's been placed on our teachers and the heavy lifting they've done since March, as Mr. Chapa said, and the emotional toll that it's taken. And there just simply isn't enough hours in the day to do everything they need to do, to do both virtual and remote, or in-person and remote. It's a lot more work, and they're stressed. So this, the other previous waiver and some of the things that this district has done and our board fully supports, anything that can alleviate the burden during these unprecedented times. I do have one question for you, though, either Dr. Cavassos or Dr. Brown. Can you put the schedule of when the proposed dates were back up?
Sure. Doctor, yeah, if you can put the proposed dates there. There it is.
So May 10th.
Is it the second?
No, 13th.
Here we go.
May 13th.
May 10th.
It looks like May 10th. Is May 10th the date in May?
Yes, sir.
Okay, as a parent of an AP student, I do believe that is an AP testing day, so how will that affect that proposed date?
Yeah, we did review that testing calendar, but we can go back and double check and make sure we didn't miss that one, sir.
For clarification, even what was sent out to the board, the proposed dates, that's still tweaking, because there's a lot to consider here. Like I said, it was a late announcement in the waiver, and so we want to make sure we cover all the bases, but testing in the spring is heavy, and we want to make sure we stay within that. So we've already had to tweak it. Quite frankly, we may have to tweak it again.
So I think that's French world history and macroeconomics testing day, according to my pings I'm getting, so from AP teachers. So yeah, and it might be impossible to find a perfect date where there's no testing, but yeah, we could just look into that. And with that, I'm prepared to make a motion. So at this time, Ms. Mays, I move to adopt the resolution to revise the AISD asynchronous plan to request a waiver to schedule periodic, non-consecutive asynchronous instructional days during the spring of the 2020-2021 calendar, and that the resolution be attached to the minutes.
Do you have a second, Mr. Chapa? Okay, so we've got a motion by Mr. Wilbanks, a second by Mr. Chapa. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will roll call vote. Dr. Reich?
Aaron Reich, I vote yes.
Mr. Wilbanks?
David Wilbanks, I vote yes.
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Booby Hogg, I vote yes.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes. Motion passes in the affirmative. Thank you. Next on our agenda, we move to our discussion action item. First item is consider a Board of Trustees handbook. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. This is the time we bring the board handbook for consideration, and this is something that the Governance Committee has been working through, and so I'll turn it to the Chair of the Governance Committee, Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. We have brought the board handbook for consideration in prior meetings. The Governance Committee has met and discussed it a few times, and after several years of tinkering with it, we think we've got it in really good streamlined shape, and there are no substantive changes that were proposed by any board members. And so the board handbook that is under consideration is essentially the board handbook that was in place last year with minor changes to adjust for dates and things of that nature. So at this time, I'd move that the board approve the Board of Trustees handbook is presented.
Okay, do you have a second? Okay, so a motion by Mr. Chapa, a second by Dr. Reich. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote. Dr. Reich?
Aaron Reich, I vote yes.
David Wilbanks, I vote yes.
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Booby Hogg, I vote yes.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes. Motion passes in the affirmative. Thank you very much to our Board Governance Committee, chaired by Mr. Chapa. Okay, our next discussion action item is consider 2021-2022 school calendar. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And this evening, we bring for your consideration the recommended calendar for next year, 2021-2022. This has gone through a committee and also has gone before our Finance and Academics Board Committee. And so we bring this very similar-looking calendar for your consideration. So Dr. Hill leads this effort, and he will have a presentation. Dr. Hill? Dr. Hill, we cannot hear you. We still cannot hear you.
If we need to, we can skip to another discussion action item and come back.
All right. That would work.
So we'll go to discussion action, discussion action item C, reopening Schools 2020-2021 Plan Update. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And as with every board meeting in recent memory, we bring an update to the board as to how the COVID pandemic is being mitigated in our schools and any updates related to that. So Dr. Brown is ready to give us her update of the schools and their operations. So Dr. Brown?
Okay, good evening again, President Mays, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos. I'm back with just a brief return-to-school update for you all this evening. Just a couple of things on our list. AIS and Tarrant County COVID-19 data. We'll share some recent stats with you, as well as an update on our rapid testing site and even our vaccinations. We've already talked about our waiver, so we'll pass on that part of the presentation. So as always, we do begin with our AISD guiding principles, offering flexibility and grace, and asking for that, of course, in return, as we've continued for many months in operating during this pandemic, ensuring educational equity for all of our students and staff members, regardless of their ethnicity, regardless of whether they're virtual or in-person, everyone having equal access to resources and to rigorous learning, prioritizing the health and safety of all of our students and staff members.
Okay, Michael's looking at it.
Valuing stakeholder input. So today, I'll provide a brief update, a health information for in-person learning, and we always begin with our Tarrant County metrics for safer in-person instruction. I think we all know these by heart by now, and we know that right now we are in substantial spread in our community. So we all know these, and so I'll just go ahead and share those updated numbers, the most current numbers from the COVID dashboard, Tarrant County dashboard. Our seven-day positivity rate as of the 10th was 27%. Our cases per week, almost 14,000 cases as of January 9th in Tarrant County. And our seven-day moving average for COVID-like illnesses at 14%, and 28% of our total beds are occupied by COVID patients. I think ultimately, as Dr. Cavassos mentioned earlier, we are just continuing to be vigilant, reminding our principals and our staff about the importance of our safety protocols, our temperature checks, making sure that we're using the Qualtrics app, we are using our face mask and washing our hands, and just ensuring that we're doing the very best we can in our schools, in our offices, to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. As relates to our AIS COVID data, you are aware that we do update that every Tuesday, and so we now have our student information there as well. So Arlington ISD staff, we have a total of about 204 active cases for both students and staff. That was Tuesday, and of course, these numbers are dynamic, so they've changed a bit since Tuesday. And so here's our Tuesday update. Active quarantine, 527 students and over, excuse me, staff and over 1,000 students who are in quarantine. Again, we do continue to collect self-reporting cases. Right now in January, we are about at 650 self-reports. Again, those self-reports are anyone who's experiencing COVID-like symptoms, anyone who's been exposed to a possible COVID, to a possible, someone who's COVID-positive, or if they themselves are COVID-positive. They do report that, and our staff has done an outstanding job of providing us that information timely fashion so that our health services team can make good decisions for our staff and for our students. Speaking of our health services team, they are amazing, and they continue to engage in our rapid testing and our rapid testing site. So far, in just 19 days of testing, we tested over 812 students and staff. That was actually as of yesterday. About 117 of them have been positive so far and 695 negative. So my math is not that great, but I think that positivity rate is about 17% or so. Don't quote me on that math number. But what I can share with you is that we're averaging about 50 rapid tests per day. In the last seven days, as you can imagine, after we've come back from the holidays, we've been pretty busy. So the team has administered almost 350 tests in one week, and 57 of those have been turned out to be positive cases. We continue to accept staff self-referrals. So if I wake up in the morning and it's 7:30, I'm on my way to work and I don't feel well, I can immediately go to the rapid testing site and be tested without an appointment. And then anything after 9, it's appointment only. And again, we are accepting students and staff members by appointment between 9 and 2:30. We are aware that Tarrant County has started immunizing people in our community, and so our AIS nurses have all had the opportunity to be vaccinated. Not all of them have been vaccinated yet, but quite a few of them have been. We also share the vaccine registration information with all of our AIS staff so that staff can make an individual and informed decision about whether they wanted to register to be vaccinated in Tarrant County. And staff members who do receive an appointment, it's already started to happen, we want to make sure that we're allowing them to leave the school or leave their office. make sure that we're allowing them to leave the school or leave their office at whatever time that appointment is, so they're able to do that without having to use any of their personal time to do so. And that is actually all we have because we talked about waivers already, so I'm happy to take any questions that the trustees might have.
Are there any questions from trustees? Okay, Mr. Willbanks.
Thank you, President Mays. Tracy, thank you for, Dr. Brown, thank you for your presentation, and it's great news. It's just a, just a brief comment. It's great news that our nursing staff has already begun immunizations and getting the vaccine. Anything that we can do to encourage, not just leave it up to choice for our staff, but the more we can do to encourage everyone when it's available to them to get vaccinated so we can get back to normal because this, you know, the health of our teachers has been forefront in my mind, and I know all of my colleagues, and this is the one way we can get, be assured that of the safety of our staff is to encourage them to get vaccinated. And again, I did, well, actually, I did have one question. On the rapid testing, you said that chart, in the last few days, we had 357 tests, but 57 were positive. That's a pretty high positive percentage rate, so that's well above 10%. So have we seen that go, been growing with the recent rise, and just like we're seeing at the county level with the county level data?
Ms. Minterley, would you like to address that? Mr. Willbanks' question?
Yes, ma'am. It varies from day to day, and there may be a little bit of an upward trend as we've come back from the holidays, but not, I wouldn't say really tremendously. We had only started doing tests December 3rd, and the 3rd and 4th, it was staff only as we were kind of learning how the process worked and being sure that our plan was going to work the way we were set up. So it may be up a little bit, but not really significantly.
Okay, thank you. And again, that test, is that the test that has higher false negatives rate?
Yes. Yes, it is. It's not, it's not really designed or approved to be used in an asymptomatic person, and so we're primarily testing those who have symptoms and don't feel well. The only time we'll test someone who does not have symptoms is if they're a household member of someone who does have symptoms, and then we'll just test the whole family because we might as well, you know, as long as they're our staff and students, we'll test them all.
All right, that's great. Thanks, Ms. Minterley, and thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Brown.
Dr. Reich.
Yeah, I don't really have a question. I just wanted to say to Ms. Minterley, the health services staff, that you guys are knocking it out of the park. Thank you for all you're doing. The, it's as with everybody in the district right now, it's an additional burden and heavy lift, but it is paramount to the safety of our teachers, our staff, our students, and I just, I'm so pleased that although it's a lot of work, that rapid test, having that available is certainly helping us to slow any type of additional spread in our district as if, if we didn't have it, there'd be a lot more opportunities for exposure. This is very, very convenient. And we always talk about the educational opportunities and the access to those opportunities in our district, and this is a great example of the healthcare opportunities and the access to that opportunity for our safety of everybody involved. So I just really appreciate all of the work and Ms. Brown going through the data always and reviewing it with us, although it's not pleasing, obviously, is where we are in our county stats, but I appreciate all the efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reich. This was a discussion action item. I did not hear, oh, I apologize. Mr. Chapa, please.
Thank you, President Mays. I had some questions for Dr. Cavassos and possibly Ms. Minterley as well. Has there been any update that you've heard of, Dr. Cavassos, from either the county or the state level about any change in how we approach going to school, given the dramatic increase in cases over the last two months?
Yeah, so the, in our conversations with the county health, it remains fidelity to the protocols. There isn't really a new protocol that has come up or a new adaptation. It's just fidelity to those protocols, and over and over, A I S D is commended for the protocols that we've put in place. That being said, it is a high positivity rate, very high, in our county, and so there hasn't been anything in relation to that. I will tell you that as we quarantine individuals and we ask if there's staffing issues and all that, we send grade levels, as you know, home and sometimes the whole school for a period of time. That has helped a lot. But beyond that, that's all we really get from our health department in terms of guidance, and quite frankly, that's all they get from the state as well. Add anything to that, Annette?
No, sir, I think that pretty much covers it. Thank you.
Still, so it's still the case that because we're adhering to our protocols, that we think that the cases are still almost exclusively coming onto campus from off-campus, and we're not seeing reason to believe that we're seeing spread events on campus.
Seen significant spread events, maybe is a better way. We, I can't say we don't have any, but that we're not seeing spread events at our campus in a significant way. It's because of our protocols and because of the things that we do, but with a positivity rate so high, it sometimes unfortunately is something that happens.
Okay. I think those are all the questions I have. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Once again, this is a discussion action item. I heard no recommendations coming from administration, so we will move back to our discussion action item, which was our 2021-2022 school calendar. Dr. Cavassos.
President Mays, and I do believe that Dr. Hill is now able to be heard, and so Dr. Hill, if you'll take us through the calendar development and our recommendation for next year's calendar.
Yes, sir. Can you hear me now? I want to make sure before I start.
We can hear you.
Okay, good. Thank you. Sorry about that. What happened? So we're here to talk about the 21-22 calendar, and the presentation will follow. We started this whole process with the purpose, and that was to recommend an academic-focused calendar for the school year that emphasizes student outcomes while being aligned with the local and state laws and other considerations for the community. We really wanted to, as a committee, focus on that academic focus on the calendar, especially with the challenges that we're in right now with COVID. So just wanted to recognize the calendar committee and let you all know that it did consist of teachers, parents, students. The student leadership advisory board was represented there, staff from all different levels, high school, elementary, junior high, professional learning, and others, as well as the three teacher organizations were represented through this process. Timeline, we put the application out for about two weeks on the website. We got some good interest in it, and we had surprisingly only one committee meeting because we were able to get a lot done in that committee meeting, and we are here today with the recommendation for the board. The agenda that we, at the committee went through, basically, we, again, started with really paying some attention to the rules and the laws that are, that govern how you make the calendar. We reviewed the current calendar, which was our basis or basis for starting, discussed some other considerations. One big topic was the elementary early release. We discussed the academic impact due to COVID-19 and discussed that it had to be a multifaceted approach to addressing that and that the calendar was just one piece in that. There was a curricular piece, there's an operational piece, an instructional piece, and then the calendar and any other pieces that we come. And then we also talked about summer school design for future years and how we can address the academic slide, and all of this kind of went into the discussion as we developed the calendar. The rules, again, were kind of boxy in with what you can do with the calendar. 75,600 operational minutes is required. Teacher contracts must be 187 days according to chapter 21. The first day of school can't be prior to the 4th Monday in August, but we're a district of innovation, and so we're exempt from that. The last day can't be prior to May 15th. There are some House Bill 3 requirements with regard to the reading academies and professional development requirements that we consider, and we also looked at the balancing the semesters as best as we can. We also considered that we really, as a district, wanted to ensure that the first semester ended before January because we didn't want the students who had semester exams to come back and have a two-week break off and then come back and try to prepare for exams, and we wanted to align with UT, Arlington, and TCC as they are some of our academic partners in the area. So the calendar that you will see today that's being recommended, it mirrors a 2021 calendar. There are seven teacher or staff development days in August, and we got good feedback from that this current year in that the teachers were really excited and appreciative of those seven days prior to really going into the school year. Two staff development exchange days, one in April and one in October. Two teacher PD days, one in January, one in May. The one week for Thanksgiving, the two weeks for winter break. The spring break still being the second full week in March, and the last day of school being May 26th. And again, that allows us to do some things a little bit different with summer school for those students that may need some additional help in the summer while ending early enough in May that gives us some time in June and July to focus on summer school and then give the teachers a little bit of time off before they have to come back in August. And then the two staff development days in May and June. So here's a, probably can't see it, but I think you do have a hard copy of the proposed calendar for the 21-22 school year, and then we'll be able to entertain any questions that you may have about the calendar or the process.
Very much, Dr. Hill. Trustees, are there any questions? Yes, Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, President Mays. I know that it's still early in the process. Dr. Cavassos and your staff are still reviewing this, but we are adopting a calendar, and we've seen other districts in the area adopt calendars that look or changing their calendars in ways that it looks significantly different than what they've done in the past, and we're adopting a calendar or considering a calendar at this point that looks very much like the calendars that we've used in years past. So it was in Dr. Hill's presentation about calendars, just one tool to address the academic gap issues that we're going to see develop because of COVID. Can you give a little bit more insight into why we're stick, you're proposing that we stick to a calendar that looks similar to what we're used to and how we're going to address those gaps?
Question. Primarily because, not that we would recommend this tonight, but primarily because the calendar can be adjusted if T E A changes some guidance or some rules, but overall, the concept is that there does need to be some extended time. And extended time can be accomplished with summer for students who need it or students who want to participate because that has to be optional to some extent. We know that this calendar works with continuity of instruction, and really, the, I think the challenge or the strategy as we come back, quote unquote, to normal, would be that we have continuity of instruction, that we have dedicated time to make sure students reach their academic performance. But beyond that, that we have time in the summer to extend that learning opportunity for students, and this calendar allows us to do that. There's been, you know, even before this school year, at the end of last year, Commissioner of Education really pressed for adaptation to calendars and things like that to address COVID, and they really didn't pan out because the rules didn't change, minutes didn't change. So to connect the previous action item that the board took action on, minutes have not been waived or even considered up until the end of December when that came up. That's how prescriptive it's been. But for Arlington, it's important to be able to have a dedicated amount of time, June would be in this case, where we can extend and continue school for students that want that or need that, and that would be an intervention strategy. So we plan to do that some this summer and next summer because we know that this effort will be years to come. It won't be addressed only in one year. We've seen some intercession calendars and things like that. They were first proposed to a deal with COVID, whether, you know, if districts shut down and all that. Well, none of that came really as an allowance from the state. So this is why we recommend this calendar, but like with every footnote, it is subject to change, and I don't mean it's going to change tomorrow or the next day, but if we bring some change back to the board because there's some significant rule change by T E A or the legislature, we want to have that flexibility as well.
Thank you. So it sounds like, you know, we've made the decision that a calendar change of some magnitude is just, we're going to take a more targeted approach and not necessarily wholesale move different parts of the calendar around.
Yeah, and the other part of that, Mr. Chapa, is this whole notion of returning back to normal, if you recreate an entire calendar that is not normal, if you will, or predictable, it does add that element of another baseline of trying to figure out, okay, did this work or did this not, or is it working? Is it the calendar? Is it the time? We do know, best practice and research will tell you, that extended time to learn is one of the most effective tools, more time to learn, which I know sounds intuitive and people do a lot of research to come up to the obvious sometimes, but more time to learn is one of the biggest strategies for student performance. But we also know that more time can't just be, you know, so go 12 hours a day and stuff like that. That's not what that means. It means time over a year, and that's our June strategy that you'll hear more of in February.
Okay, those are all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Yes, Mr. Willbanks.
Thank you, President Mays. Kind of to follow up on my colleague, Mr. Chapa's questions, Dr. Cavassos. I agree with him, and we all agree that the COVID slide is going to be significant, and a huge focus is going to be, have to extended to those students who need remediation. And I agree that summer, providing ample time in the summer for that extended learning is probably the best route as opposed to some of the calendars that the commissioner proposed, like the intercessional calendar, which landed like a lead balloon when it was proposed at the first of the year last year. I actually personally thought, hey, that, maybe that's a great idea, but parents, teachers, that's opening a can of worms, and I do, kind of my follow-on question to Mr. Chapa's is kind of that extended learning is a great model for our younger learners, but also for those older secondary students who are looking at grade recovery. Will they have extra time for, to do credit recovery and what's our platform that we use?
Fittin and stuff like that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I know my son, who took advantage of, not for credit recovery, but to get accelerated classes in over the summer and was able to get quite a number that he's going to be able to graduate a year early now, this spring. What's, can you give me any indication of what our plans are for like the secondary students for that credit recovery and extended opportunity to help those students?
Yeah, so without going on a tangent from my comments here, but we have already started to extend the time for credit recovery and grade redemption into February through January for secondary students so that they can continue doing their work from first semester and hopefully continue to make that work up and pass. In the summer, it's, it'll be all up for, you know, kind of revamping, if you will, because it's going to be based on our needs. So I'll give you an example. If we have a big need with freshmen, then there may need to be a freshman strategy, fewer classes, more summertime, if you will, opportunities so they can catch up and things. So it really is something that our academic services, Dr. Worts and others, are examining to come up with the right model. I do think that original credit classes that happen in the summer will probably be very similar to what original credit looks like because that hasn't really changed. It's those classes and those situations where students have lost, you know, It's those classes and those situations where students have lost, you know, three, four, five credits. And the strategy would probably be less is more for them so that they can actually get some credit in the summer. But we're revamping all that. And that, that does include how long they'll go during the day, to your point, serving lunch, transportation, all those things are open and up for, for creation and development because it's going to take not only this summer to have strategies like that, but I think in future summers as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then finally, I'll say that we had our committee, the finance committee, and academics had an opportunity to review this calendar, and it looked great. I know, Dr. Hill, that sometimes when you're putting together these calendars, it's a lot like taking all the requirements and trying to fit a square peg in a round hole, and it just doesn't fit. But somehow you, you guys make a way, find a way to make it happen. You have even more requirements this year, but it seemed like it was a piece of cake. And there's no controversy, and we ended up with a calendar that looks very much even better than I think our calendar this year, COVID or no COVID. So the calendar looks good, and I'll be supporting it. I don't have any qualms with it.
Any other questions or comments from trustees? Okay, this is a discussion action item, so if there's a motion, please do it at this time.
I guess, President Mays, I'm prepared to make a motion. And just clarification for anybody that's listening and wondering, gee, why is the finance committee looking at this? Actually, our full committee is Finance and Academic Accountability Committee, and this is an academic calendar, so that, that is why. So at this time, I move that the board approve the 2021, 2022 school calendar as presented.
Okay, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, I have a motion by Dr. Rice, a second by Mr. Will Banks. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will roll call vote. Dr. Rice?
Aaron Rice, I vote yes.
David Will Banks, I vote yes.
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Booby Hogg, I vote yes.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes. Motion passes in the affirmative. Thank you very much, Dr. Hill. Thank you to our Board Finance and Academics Committee chaired by Dr. Rice. Okay, next thing on our agenda is discussion action item. Considering motions necessary to address, Dr. Kavassos, anything brought forward?
Thank you, President Mays. We do not have any motions at this time to consider.
We will continue on our agenda, items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda. Are there any items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda from any trustees? Okay, seeing none. Tonight, we will be considering the items listed on your agenda under consent items. Mrs. Moss, are you prepared to join us? Good evening.
Thank you, President Mays. Board of Trustees, Dr. Kavassos, we do not have any items over $50,000 to consider tonight, and neither do we have any bids to consider tonight.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mrs. Moss. So we will continue on our agenda. Next is discussion item. Okay. Nothing to be pulled. Thank you very much. So do I have a motion?
Consent agenda.
Okay, second? Okay, a motion by Dr. Rice, a second by Mrs. Fowler. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote. Dr. Rice?
Aaron Rice, I vote yes.
David Will Banks, I vote yes.
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Booby Hogg, I vote yes.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes. Motion passes on the consent agenda. Thank you. Our next item is our discussion item for a budget update. Dr. Kavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And this evening, we want to bring to the board a budget update. And our Finance and Academics Committee has already vetted some of this update and has given us feedback, et cetera. It is really the beginning of our budgeting process. It's year-round, but it is the time that we bring the first update to the board. And it's an important update because we have, to some extent, uncertainty with state funding, whether they'll hold us harmless for the spring. So you'll hear some of that with enrollment and, and things like that. But we also know that we, in November, thanks to our voters, passed the VATRE. And so how does that come into play? Fundamentally, we made a commitment through our VATRE and to our staff that we would continue our trend in competitive compensation and that this funding would allow us to help that happen and make that a reality. And so those things all now come into play with our first budget update. What you'll see tonight is also, in some cases, the worst-case scenario. And so we just want to be kind of realistic with, with our budget and our forecast. Last point is that there is a legislative session that has started, and so that also has a big impact on our budget. So tonight, we have Darla Moss, our CFO, who will lead us through a brief presentation really of kind of where our budget stands today. And it really starts to kick off that work on budget development, eventually budget approval by our school board. So, Ms. Moss?
Thank you, Dr. Kavassos. So as Dr. Kavassos said, we prepared just briefly tonight some numbers. We've shared this information with our Finance and Academics Committee, and we're just prepared tonight to actually update the board on our current operating budget for the 2021 fiscal year. We also want to talk a little bit about the challenges as far as the health crisis and how that affects our budget right now. We'll take a look back at the 1920 fiscal year just to see how we closed that year out and how we ended up from March to June with those operating under the pandemic. So knowing though that information from March to June, we're able to actually look at and analyze the data and that information to assist us in forecasting for the current year and how we think we might end, and also how we budget for the next fiscal year. So just taking a look back, this slide shows how the board adopted the budget for 1920. This budget was adopted in June of 2019, and it closed out in June of 2020. The board was then provided information from the external audit on how we closed out that year in November, just this past November of 2020. So we'll take a look at just the general operating side of it. And you'll note on this slide that we started the year out and adopted that $6.9 million deficit. But when we closed it out and all was said and done, we ended up with a $24.3 million surplus. So the difference there was 31.293. Some of the factors that came into that $24 million that we see in the surplus is our payroll. We had excess in payroll. We were operating differently under remote learning. So electricity played a part in that, transportation, we stopped our travel. So all of that came to play into that $24.3 million that we were able to put into our fund balance. And if you take a look at the student nutrition budget, we actually adopted a small excess. We anticipated a surplus for that fund. We ended up with a $3.4 million deficit. That is directly the result of the pandemic and us having to operate differently in the food service program. And so we take that information and we look at our current year and try to forecast where we might land. And we'll share that information with you later in the, in the presentation. Just a quick look at the debt service fund. We adopted a $787,000 deficit, ended up with a $21.9 million surplus. That was a planned activity. We wanted to, we knew that we would be refunding some bonds to save some dollars as far as the interest rate on that. And we also were needing to cover the August debt payment for that 2020 year. When we take a look at capital projects, they're a little different. So we adopted a deficit budget of 137 million. We actually ended up $204.9 million surplus. The difference in capital projects, when you look at that, is whenever we issue our bonds, we get that revenue in, but we don't necessarily spend those dollars in the same fiscal year. So you'll see that variance on the capital projects. Natural gas fund, we adopted 1 million, just over 1 million, and we ended up with 899,000. I attribute that to our interest rates not being what we actually projected them to be. So now we'll move forward to the 2020, 21 adopted budget. So that's the budget that we're currently working in. This was adopted by the board in June of, of 2020. And so at that time, there are some things that we knew and some things that we didn't know. We did not exactly know where we would land as far as enrollment. We didn't know whether or not we would be whole harmless as far as that if we didn't make, make our, meet our enrollment. And on our, our food service budget, we budgeted a $238,000 surplus. Debt service, we budgeted for a $3 million deficit. Natural gas, 807, and again, construction was 343. So our average daily attendance, what we didn't know then that we know now is we will be held harmless for the first three, six weeks. The caveat there is the additional six weeks was added after districts were communicating with the, with the state on and advocating across the state for the whole harmless for that third, six weeks. The only issue there is that we have to allow on-campus instruction throughout the third, six weeks, and Arlington ISD has done that. So as of right now, we will be held harmless for the first 18 weeks of the school year. The, that amount will be calculated based on a three-year average trend of the final ADA, and it's on a three-year period from the 1718, 1819, and 1920 school year. And we continue to advocate for the whole harmless provision, of course, for the entire school year. And you'll see how that affects us here in a little bit. So our general operating projections, we wanted to share with you some, some different scenarios. If you look in column one on this slide, that's our adopted budget again, and we're just focusing on the general operating, where we adopted the 31.5 million deficit. If you look in the second column, we've looked at our numbers and, on the revenue side, and we've said, we're forecasting with the hold harmless included for that first 18 weeks and with no VATRE. So that's the scenario one that we, we ran the numbers on. No VATRE passing and the whole harmless for the first 18 weeks. And had the VATRE not passed, you can see that bottom line there, we would be looking at a $70.4 million deficit budget. The next scenario there in column three that we ran was, okay, the VATRE passed, and we know that now, it passed. And so we're looking at the first 18 weeks as hold harmless. The last 18 weeks, we're not looking at whole harmless. We're basing it on actual data. And if we do that, we're looking at a $16 million deficit, even with the VATRE passing. So then we said, well, let's assume that the whole harmless is, we're going to be held harmless for the full year. And that information shows a $10.9 million surplus. So we need to continue to advocate for the whole harmless for the full year. We had a call with the commissioner today, and as late as today, we still don't have an answer on whether or not we would, we will be held harmless. I want to mention, too, the yellow highlights here are our expenditure side. We did make adjustments on the revenue side. We did not make adjustments on the expenditure side as far as salaries. We do know that we have some, some room there on, in the salary expenditures. We have some vacant positions. We've been evaluating whether or not to hire positions that are, are open in anticipation of what, you know, our bottom line is going to be. So we have not adjusted that yet. We're in the process of evaluating those numbers, and we'll bring that information back to you. Again, I also want to just remind you that these numbers are based on information that we looked at at the end of the year. All of these numbers are estimates and, you know, based on what we had at the time. The food service projections are a little not as positive, I guess, as, as, as general operating. So we adopted a $238,000 excess budget. And because of the operations and the changes we've had to make in how we operate, there are more students who are about half and half on the students that are utilizing the remote learning. So there are not as many participating in, in the food service program. What we're looking at is we had Dr., Mr. Lewis and his team actually ran a cash flow. And based on that cash flow, we're forecasting an $8.2 million deficit in our food service operations. The thing about food services and that fund is those are federal dollars, and we cannot end the year in the red on that fund. So that $8.2 million would have to be supplemented by our general fund dollars. So I just wanted to show a comparison of how it would look based on a couple of those scenarios. The first two columns here are historical data on what our general operating fund balance was and, and the other funds as well. So we'll just walk through the general operating line here. And at the end of 2019, we had 198 million. We increased to 222 million in 2020. And based on what we adopted for the 2021 fiscal year, we would have 190 million in, in our fund balance. If we looked at the first scenario that I shared with you with the VATRE passing and us held harmless for the first 18 weeks, everything else looking at actual numbers, our fund balance would be at 206 with that $16 million deficit. If we looked at hold harm, we were, if the, if we looked at the scenario where we were held harmless for the full year, we would be at 233 million. The other takeaway here is the food services. If you look at this inventory line item, I've included the $5.2 million in inventory. So if they were to actually end with the 8.2 million, we would have to use general operating dollars to, to assist them so that they are not in the red at the end of the year. The 12 million that you see under the adopted budget for the fund balance and what we, what we anticipated it would be includes that $5.2 million in inventory. So the district would have to, have to cover the $8.2 million and balance their budget. So with 8.2 million and the 5.2 million in inventory, that would have, and they would end up with a $1.2 million deficit in our food services program. They cannot, they would have to be in the black. We would have to also give them money to start up for their inventory for the next school year. Debt service, natural gas, and capital projects would not be affected by the whole harmless. So we're, we're currently looking at the challenges. We know that we need to look at and evaluate the PPE. Our food and nutrition, of course, that program's sustainability is, is going to be a challenge for us in the budget. We are looking at possible reductions in the state, possible budget reductions locally. We have had positive news on the state level. The comptroller reported that we, it did look like, it didn't look as bad as they initially thought. We continue to evaluate the enrollment trend and, and the attendance, of course, all that play a major role on, on our budget. And so I know I threw a lot of numbers at you, but I'm glad to, to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Moss. Trustees, any questions? Yes, Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Mays. I was going, my first question is, we, we've had a lot of discussion over, throughout COVID and especially last spring. And there were a lot of promises being made to us that if we did certain things and we paid for certain things, then we would be made whole on the back end, you know, things like providing, you know, we were one of the first districts to set up food service for our students during COVID. You know, things like providing, you know, we were one of the first districts to set up food service for our students during COVID back in March of last year. So i- is some of the gaps that we're projecting in the the budget, especially in the food service fund and in in some other areas, too, how much of that is a result of us not being made whole for those expenses as we were told we would be last year?
And so, Mr. Chapa, thank you. We are taking advantage of every reimbursement that we can. We are looking at the coronavirus relief fund, and we've actually reached out and and applied for assistance with technology and those type things. So we're in the process of applying for those. We've not been reimbursed on them all, but we do believe that we will get reimbursements on a majority of that. The food services is different. It's a federal fund, so there's not a lot that we can do or assistance that we can take advantage of on the food services side. A lot of those dollars are coming from federal, and the food service dollars are federal. So we'd be kind of double dipping if we were to be reimbursed from federal dollars on the food service side.
So is the gap that the gap that we're seeing in food service then is is primarily due to the fact that we would have students normally on campus eating meals, and we would either be getting reimbursed for free and reduced meals, and then we would have paying students, and we just don't have those folks on campus. So we're not selling, quote, you know, for lack of a better term, as many meals, and that's that's mainly where that gap's coming from.
Absolutely. And just like the general operating fund, our food services fund is, you know, the large percentage of salary. And so we have those employees still working. We still have seventy-six campuses. Even though we are not at a hundred percent students, we still have students that are going to those campuses, and we're feeding them, and we have to have teams there. Right now, we are probably ten percent of our food services staff is under quarantine. And so that, you know, kind of hurts our operations as well. But Mr. Lewis and his team are doing and looking for ways to try to operate differently, to try to keep that sustained.
Yeah, thank you for explaining that. And I I and one reason I ask that is I know that that Mr. Lewis and his staff have done such a phenomenal job, not only during COVID, but before that, and being very innovative, very disciplined in their in the way that they approach serving our students' meals and that there was, you know, that that's a the food service fund has not been an issue since I've, at least as long as I've been on the board, every budgetary cycle, they're in the black and very, you know, with a balance and doing very well. And so this, you know, I wanted anybody who's watching this who sees negative numbers in the food service fund and somehow once, you know, I would encourage them not to read into that, that there's some something wrong with the way that we provide student meals or how we're managing those funds, that that is largely a function of of the way that this crisis has panned out and reduce the number of students that we have on campus eating our meals and and not due to anything else beyond that. I wanted to to make a few other points, you know, ba- based on this. And if you could pull up, I don't know what slide number it is, but it's the slide where you show the two thousand twenty, twenty, twenty-one general operating projections, the adopted budget, the forecasted hold harmless eighteen weeks, and then with the Vader numbers. Yeah, that that one, thank you.
Okay.
A couple of points I wanted to make off this slide. And the first of which is, when we when we're talking about hold harmless, I want to make sure that that folks understand that that what we're what we're asking to be, what what that means is we're asking the state to fund us at the same level they would if our student attendance had had panned out this year the way that we had projected, had COVID not happened. And the the reason that's important is so much of our funding is tied to attendance, and and we were held harmless. We were funded in the fall as if COVID had not happened, essentially. It's a lot of details, but I'm summarizing it. And we are asking the state, and the state really needs to make the decision to do that for the spring. Few reasons for that is, well, first of all, COVID is is affecting everyone. This is not an AISD problem. We are a few, we're about two thousand students under what we were projecting for the year, and we are actually compared to our peer districts doing very well at trying to get students back into school, whether that's virtually or in person, and students are continuing to trickle in. From what we've determined so far, Dr. Cavassos and his staff have done a root cause analysis, very, you know, different reasons for that gap, but we're not unique in experiencing that gap. And so it's a statewide problem, and there's no particular reason not to treat all districts the same and look at this as the one-off situation it is where and and districts should be funded as if COVID had not occurred, at least for this year. There's, we can talk about whether or not that should be the case going forward. But as far as I'm concerned, that money has already been budgeted in the last legislative cycle. The state has it. We are generally serving the same footprint in this envi- even in this environment as we would have if we had all of our students here. And we just don't know how next year is going to pan out. As we get through this crisis, we don't know how that's how it's going to be when students return. And if we have the the students that we had before come back next year, and they're just gone for this year, if we have to make budgetary decisions because we're not held harmless just for this spring that we otherwise wouldn't make, we are going to be making a lot of decisions in the spring that we're going to have to walk back in the fall when we have our kids that we had before COVID come back. And there's just no real reason for us to do that. The money is there, and I would encourage the commissioner and our state legislators to, this is something that that needs to be decided as soon as possible, and I don't, I can't really see any justification for not making that decision now. And the governance committee and and President Mays has joined us on a few of these legislative calls, too. We've been emphasizing that message to our state legislative delegation, and and they they seem very receptive to it. I think they know that this is something that needs to be done, and I would just encourage them to move with all deliberate speed to make that happen. On the chart that that Ms. Moss has has put up here, too, I just want to take a moment to again highlight and why this board made the very difficult decision to go out for a VATRE in this environment. And I again want to thank the voters for approving that VRT VATRE in November, because what you can see from this slide is if that VRT VATRE had not passed, we would be run, we would project as of this moment, a deficit for this year of seventy-point-five million dollars. And this district's been disciplined for a very long time, and we do have a fund balance that could accommodate that. But that would be a substantial chunk of our fund balance. And we have made a strong commitment to our teachers and staff over the last year and a half to maintain our competitiveness on pay. And the VATRE was crucial in ensuring that we could do that going forward and that the raises that we gave last summer were not a one-off thing. We cannot, could not have maintained that commitment in the face of seventy-plus million-dollar deficits. It's just not financially possible. And so I again just want to thank this board for having the courage to go out in a in a very challenging political environment and taking a little bit of a risk, but taking a stand for the commitment that we made. And I again want to thank voters for proving that because this slide shows the consequences of us not taking that action. And with that, that those are all the comments and questions I have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Yes, Mr. Will Banks.
Thank you, President Mays, and thank you, Mr. Chapa, for your passion and for so eloquently pointing out the importance of those two things, the VATRE, so that we can continue to be able to pay our teachers and our staff competitively and operate efficiently, as well as the importance, the legislative session just kicked off this week, Tuesday, and nothing is more important than this whole harmless provision. And thank you for pointing out the importance of that. Having said that, there are a lot of propitious signs given with the comptroller on Monday stating that our projected four-point-something billion-dollar deficit that we were looking at going into this session has now dwindled to nine-hundred-and-forty-eight million. The rainy day fund has increased to eleven billion. And on top of that, the state is due to get some five billion dollars for K through twelve education and funds through the next COVID relief bill or through the current COVID relief bill that was just recently passed. So those are all propitious signs. There's clearly the funds are available from the state. They've are, as Mr. Chapa eloquently pointed out, the funds have already been budgeted by the state, and they should continue on. And, you know, but the the fact remains, the decision has not been made despite all these positive signs and positive indicators from our local delegation. I do want to also thank all of our grassroots organizations who have relentlessly pressured our local delegation. That includes the Council of PTAs here locally, Tasbe and other organizations, teacher organizations, and especially Hold Your Hand Texas, which has continued to be a leader in fighting for education in the state. Oh, what did I say? Hold harmless, raise your, it's late, Raise Your Hand Texas. So thank you. Please forgive me, Mr. Butts, for mangling the name of your fine organization. So I think the campaign from Raise Your Hand Texas had was very influential. And so fingers crossed, it's not there yet. I think the focus of our legislative efforts need need to get us to the finish line on the whole harmless provision. But having said that, my question to Ms. Moss is, given the fact that there's five billion dollars of new COVID money, how do we know, how is that going to either affect money we directly get from that? Or is it going to be kind of the same bad deal we had with the last COVID group? Where the state surpl- yeah, supplanted what we were budgeted to get with their funding, and so we actually didn't see any relief from the COVID relief, so.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. And I I I guess, based on history, what we've seen as far back as two thousand nine, that's what the state has done. They've supplanted it. They put that in money in their budget, and then they base basically hold the district harmless, kind of like they did back in the spring. So that would be what I anticipate they're going to do again.
About with the last COVID relief and and also with funds that were available from the state to offset some of the costs that we incurred due to COVID last time. You said that you were still in the process of applying for those reimbursements. Is it, just to be clear on your presentation, your place, your presentation numbers did not include those reimbursements? Or did they include some of those reimbursements anticipating?
They did not include those reimbursements. Basically, what we'll what we'll do is, on the revenue side, it'll be kind of a wash. So if you'll note, I still have, I think I'm still sharing that screen. In the yellow, where you see the expenditures, we have not adjusted expenditures yet. And we've not adjusted the revenue as far as the money that we've received or we will be receiving from some of those relief dollars. So it will be a wash based on what we've we've seen on the expenditure side, those extra expenditures that we are looking at for PPE, for sanitation and cleaning, those type things, and and the technology as well. We've spent six million dollars for technology. A big portion of that, you know, was from the bond because we had that bond program, thank goodness, available to us. The reimbursement will be back to the bond program. But whatever we purchase from general operating, we'll see that reimbursement go back to general operating.
Okay. And do you know how much money, I mean, you say that's going to be a wash, but so to be clear, I think you said it's not shown on the revenue, but it is shown in the expenditures?
No, it is not. The expenditures that you see there is exactly what we adopted in the budget. So we've not made those.
So it'll be a total wash, so the money's irrelevant?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. And so some of those, you won't see all of the things that we've spent in those expenditures, just what we adopted in the budget. What you also will not see is we are reducing expenditures as well based on how we're operating currently. So the the staffing, there are positions that we're not yet, that we're not hiring. They're vacant, but we're not hiring those positions. Those positions are in the in those budgeted numbers that you see highlighted in the yellow. So we haven't made adjustments there. When we make those adjustments as well, the bottom line will look differently.
Okay. All right, no further questions. Thank you, Ms. Moss and your entire team. These have been challenging times for everyone, and your department has not escaped the COVID wrath, and it made it made it more difficult to imagine. I can't, or I can't imagine how much more difficult it is trying to budget and forecast given all the moving pieces and unknowns that we have due to COVID.
Other questions, comments from trustees? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Moss, thank you very much once again for that budget update. We will now continue on our agenda. Now we have come to our open forum for non-agenda items. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding non-agenda items?
Yes, ma'am, we have one registered speaker, Ms. Tammy Robinson.
Okay, welcome, Ms. Robinson. The second open forum segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to address the trustees on any subject except personnel. This is not intended to be a discussion or a debate, and trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. You will have five minutes to speak. Mrs. Benjamin will notify you when your time is up. Please end your presentation at that time. Okay, Ms. Robinson, your time is starting now. Hello, can you hear me, Ms. Robinson? Can you hear us?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Perfect. Good evening, President Mays, Dr. Cavassos, members of the board and guests. My name is Tammy Robinson, and I'm advocating for parents and teachers across our district. I would like to address some concerns regarding virtual learning. I want to first and foremost thank our board, teachers, and definitely parents for shifting so quickly, shifting gears, and working diligently to adopt new processes so our children can continue their education. Over the past several months, so much progress has been made regarding online learning and the plot, the new platform. However, many students continue to struggle, and failure rates are becoming increasingly high throughout the district. I would like to point out some concerns and possible solutions that could make a positive impact on students' successes. Many students are at risk of failing, having to take credit recovery courses and potentially not graduating. By altering some systematic changes, we could possibly keep students engaged and reduce future dropout rates. One of the things that I would like to bring up is possibly removing restrictions on assignments. Some assignments are are being blocked after a day or two, and students are not able to access all assignments nor receive credit. Students are becoming unmotivated, and and to complete or learn the material once they fall behind isn't a task that a lot of them are just really not wanting to pick up and take off with, especially if they do not have a way to self-correct. This is having a negative negative impact on students by causing an increased anxiety across the board with us parents as well, and I know a lot of our teachers are feeling the same. There's lack of motivation, failing grades, and the inability to advance academically. All students do not exhibit the same organizational skills and may have individual circumstances at home that impede access or learning. that impede access, or their learning environment may not be adequate. It is proposed all assignments be left open and available to students until the end of the six weeks grading period. Or at least keep assignments open for a particular, or for partial credit, so that students are motivated to do the assignment, and students would still have access to learn the material. All students would have a better opportunity to learn and advance in the self-paced environment. Another action item is notices sent out on updates in a timely manner. We saw instances at the start of this semester where there were scheduled changes, and there was not a notice that was sent out. It took students a couple of days to reacclimate to the new schedules and get back on track. Meanwhile, students fell behind on assignments and are already failing due to assignments being locked. Due to the dates expiring, some students wasn't able to figure out their schedules in time to be able to make those adjustments. It's proposed that advanced notice be sent to students and parents anytime there is a schedule change to prevent future issues. Parent portal versus Canvas and the importance of real-time information. Due dates on assignments differ on the parent portal versus Canvas. This is inconsistent, imposes confusion between parents, teachers, and students. Parents trying to help guide students during this time is, I'm going to tell you from my own perspective, it has been very difficult, especially when you have working parents. And I know the teachers are feeling the same. However, it is imperative that we have clear, accurate, and up-to-date.
Ms. Robinson, your time is over.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next part of our agenda is our superintendent's report. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. I don't have an official report, other than to, once again, thank our students and staff for their commitment, their persistence during this pandemic time, the creativity of our teachers and our administrators, principals, et cetera, to make sure that we meet as best as we can the needs of our students. So, a big thank you to them. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Are there any other trustees with reports? Okay, seeing none. I just want to remind everyone of the activities that are coming up this weekend for MLK celebration. So, please make sure that you go out and YouTube, Facebook, however spectrum you can participate in watching the events. Please do so over the next several days. Okay. It is now 9:25, and we will move to a closed meeting pursuant to Sections 551.071 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act for the topics set forth on our agenda. Thank you. At this time, we will reconvene into open session. The next item on the agenda is to consider a public complaint of Jaclyn Irwin, filed under Board Policy DGBA Local. Consistent with Board Policy DGBA Local, this grievance hearing is being heard in a closed meeting unless the employee wishes that the hearing be held in open session. Does the employee wish the hearing to be in open session?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Since the employee wishes the hearing to be in open, let me remind the employee not to use the names of any students or attack the character of any employee. Otherwise, we will go into closed meeting for the remainder of the complaint. It is nine? Thank you, I can't see. It is 9:47 on January 14, 2021. The Board of Trustees will now hear an appeal of the superintendent's decision denying the appeal of Ms. Irwin's grievance over her termination. This meeting has been requested in writing by Jason Stewart on behalf of Ms. Irwin in accordance with Board Policy DGBA Local. The portion of the proceedings in which the grievant and the administration present their statements will be recorded by audio tape. The board's deliberations will not be taped. The superintendent has forwarded to the board a copy of the administrative decisions at levels one, two, and three, along with all exhibits and other materials used, presented, or relevant to the lower-level conferences. No new information will be considered in reaching a decision on this appeal. I remind the parties that the issue before the board is whether the administration's decision at levels two or three should be upheld, reversed, or modified. The board is not the fact-finder, but must rely on the facts and other information presented in the record. The board will listen to the grievance and administration's presentation, and may make a decision not later than the next regular meeting. The board may also choose to take no action. In that event, the last administrative decision stands as the final decision in this matter. Each party will be afforded a total of 10 minutes to present their positions concerning the administrative decision before the board on appeal. Ms. Benjamin will keep the time for both parties. If either party exhausts the allotted time before completing their presentation, I will call time and permit the person speaking to complete that sentence. No extensions will be permitted. I ask that parties identify themselves for the record before speaking, and speak clearly for the microphone to make their presentations. All parties will maintain order and decorum. Ms. Irwin, Mr. Stewart, you may begin.
Thank you, President Mays, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. My name is Jason Stewart. I'm an attorney with United Educators Association, representing Mrs. Irwin. Before we begin, I would like to ask the boards leave. Would it be possible for an additional two minutes for each side? I've got my part down to 10 minutes, but I'd like to be able to fully engage with counsel there after he speaks.
Board, everybody, Mr. Thomas?
Okay.
Yes, you may.
Thank you so much.
12 minutes, Ms. Benjamin.
Okay, thank you, President Mays, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. We appreciate you providing us this opportunity tonight. I know it's been a long night, and indeed, it has been a long year. So, I want to begin by thanking all of you for the consideration you have shown district employees during this past year. The action that this board took back in August, approving additional leave for employees required to self-quarantine due to exposure at work, as well as the actions tonight, are examples of the leadership this board has shown. And we have also seen Dr. Cavassos serving as a leader among superintendents in the state, advocating for both students and employees during this crisis. Much has been asked of educators this year, and I think we have all gained additional respect for educators and everything they do as a result. It is against that backdrop that I present the case of Mrs. Jaclyn Irwin, previously a 30-year employee of this district, working most recently as a special education teaching assistant at Arlington High School. On January 10, 2020, one year and four days ago, Mrs. Irwin was informed at 9:00 AM of the district's intent to terminate her if she did not choose to resign. Mrs. Irwin was given three hours to think it over and inform the district of her decision. That is the amount of consideration that was shown to a 30-year employee of this district. It was only then that she called us for the first time. She had not called us before that, because, after first reporting the situation on the campus of Arlington High School on the afternoon of January 7, Mrs. Irwin was told by HR to not speak with anyone about the situation. Mrs. Irwin, not wanting to endanger what she assumed must be a criminal investigation of the parties involved in the situation she reported, took that admonition seriously. So, you can imagine her surprise when she was informed that the district wanted to terminate her. We have limited time, so I will try to describe the situation that led to Mrs. Irwin's termination as succinctly as possible. On January 7, 2020, Mrs. Irwin was eating lunch in her car in a campus parking area during her lunch break. She saw a great deal of commotion, with a car in front of her revving its engine and driving in a dangerous manner, and students crowding around. She then saw what she thought could be a gun being handed to a member of the crowd. That person then proceeded to get into another vehicle, a truck, and exit the school parking lot. At that point, Mrs. Irwin was in what can only be described as a profound state of shock. What she thought she had just witnessed was so outside the realm of her lived experience that she questioned whether it was actually real. She was also extremely scared. Had anyone seen her sitting there in her car? Where was the truck going? Thankfully, Mrs. Irwin had the presence of mind to slink down in her seat and take a photo of the truck with her cellphone, which is probably more than many of us would have done and would have had the composure to do. That photo is in your packet, and its existence led to the apprehension of the individuals involved, with thankfully no harm befalling anyone on campus. The district administration, however, faulted Mrs. Irwin for not following the guidance of the employee handbook in such situations. According to their summary of the handbook's guidance found in the Level 1 decision, quote, "The AISD employee handbook requires all employees to immediately report a suspected weapons policy violation to an administrator and/or 911," end quote. The precise language which we cited in our Level 1 complaint from page 76 of that year's handbook states, quote, "If any employee observes a direct violation of the district's weapons policy, e.g., armed intruder, they should immediately move their students to safety, call 911, and notify campus administration of the location of the intruder." Mrs. Irwin fully admits she did not call 911. She also admits that, with the benefit of hindsight, she would do so if, God forbid, anything like that were to happen again. All we have asked all along is that the decision-makers put themselves in her shoes. And I suppose it is easy to say initially, "Well, I would have called 911." No question. But when trying to imagine yourself in that position, please actually take a moment and consider all the factors. As we already mentioned, Mrs. Irwin had never experienced anything like this before, and was in a genuine state of shock, as well as fear. Remember, the person with the gun did not go back into the school, but got in a truck and drove off. If she got out of her car then, would they see her? She was paralyzed with these thoughts. You see Mrs. Irwin's husband tonight, Bobby. He has been her constant companion and trusted advisor throughout this process. Yet, she didn't even think to call him or anyone else to seek his counsel on what to do. She just kept replaying the scene over in her head. And yes, she prayed, prayed to God to give her strength to snap out of her shock, for guidance as to what to do, and for the safety of everyone at the school and herself. Some may say, "Well, working in a school is unpredictable, and we need to have people who can react instantly to whatever gets thrown at them. We can't risk having anyone at any level who freezes up in such a situation." But is that really a fair expectation of a teacher's assistant? To be our only line of defense for a gun exchange going down in a school parking lot? Mrs. Irwin has received no training to prepare her for situations such as this, nor has she been empowered to react to such situations. I myself was an elementary teacher in another local district, and I've never worked in a more strictly hierarchical environment. At the initial Q&amp;A with HR, Mrs. Irwin was asked why she didn't call an administrator from her cellphone. Mrs. Irwin did not have the phone numbers of administrators in her cellphone contacts. They were never given to her. Moreover, she had previously been disempowered one year earlier, when she was marked down on her end-of-the-year appraisal, one of the rare instances that that has ever happened, for the category, quote, "Avoids overreacting to sensitive issues or minor incidents," because she had reminded a colleague about the proper procedure for signing out each day. What if Mrs. Irwin had called 911? The campus had been placed on lockdown, the news crews all came out, and then the truck, which, remember, had left campus, never returned, and no gun was ever found. Would administration have had her back under such circumstances? Perhaps so. It's impossible to say. But when an employee is punished so severely as Mrs. Irwin was here, terminated, even though her actions may have well saved lives that day, what do you think the takeaway will be for many other employees? I'll tell you. It will be to keep your head down and don't say anything. Mrs. Irwin could have sat in that car and convinced herself that she had not, in fact, seen a gun, and simply gone back inside and hoped for the best. I hate to think what could have happened had that been the case. Did she make a mistake? Yes, and she freely admits so. Does that outweigh the 30 years of good she has done working with students with special needs and warrant her termination? I don't believe it does. And neither does this district, according to its own board policy. Policy AE Local, which we cited in our Level 1 complaint, states, quote, "MPE, Managed Performance Empowerment, requires accountability, holding all people in the organization responsible for meeting the district's written standards. Accountability means that the district has a system for schools and functional units that establishes desired outcomes and identifies key performance indicators. Accountability here includes empowerment for high performance, considerable opportunities for guided improvement, and appropriate consequences for chronic deficiency." Now, we all know that Mrs. Irwin is an at-will employee, and as such, it is extremely easy for the district to terminate her. But this board has set a higher standard for itself with that policy. Mrs. Irwin was not empowered. She was given no opportunities for guided improvement, and her acknowledged deficiency in this matter was not a chronic one. Administration disregarded another part of this policy, too, the part that states MPE requires accountability, holding all people in the organization responsible for meeting the district's written standards. Mrs. Irwin is not the only one who didn't call 911 that day. After she reported what she had seen, everyone assembled in the security room to view that video. From that video, they saw the person who had been given the gun return to campus. According to the employee handbook, a strict interpretation, they then should have called 911. No one did so. So, why is Mrs. Irwin the only one who's been held accountable? That is not to say that we want anyone else to be terminated over this, far from it. We recognize that guns in schools is a societal problem, as are many of the problems that our schools are charged with confronting, while simultaneously trying to accomplish their core mission of educating children. The only reason we point that out is that the Level 1 decision states, quote, "Grievant failed to meet her burden of proving that the administration violated district policy or the law, or that it acted arbitrarily or capriciously or in bad faith." We believe, however, that the fact that Mrs. Irwin was dealt with so severely, and was indeed the only district employee to have suffered any such consequence, does prove not just one, but both of those facts. Mrs. Irwin misses her students and her colleagues and the district that she has called home, both as an employee and a resident. From the beginning, she has only asked that she be reinstated and be provided back pay from the date that she was wrongfully terminated. We ask that the board view this one acknowledged mistake within the scope of her many years of dedicated service and grant the relief requested. And I'd like to reserve the balance of my time, if possible. Thank you.
Mr. Thomas, on behalf of Arlington Independent School District Administration, do you have a response?
President Mays, board members, my name is Scott Thomas, and I'm representing the administration in this grievance. As you've heard from Mr. Stewart, Mrs. Irwin was an at-will employee. She was a special education teacher assistant at Arlington High School. As an at-will employment, her employment could be terminated for any reason or no reason at all, as long as her termination did not violate the law or board policy, or was arbitrary and capricious. And it was not. The facts are not in dispute here, as you heard Mr. Stewart say. Mrs. Irwin was on her lunch break, sitting in her car, when she observed a student, someone pass a handgun to another student in the parking lot. That was at approximately 12:50 PM. She used her cellphone to take a photo of the truck that the student with the firearm got in and exited the parking lot. But she did not use her phone to call 911 or to call an administrator. She claims she didn't have the numbers for administrators. But she didn't dial the general school number either, the school that she worked at. She called no one. Instead, she waited in her car, and she finished her lunch. After her lunch was over, she went inside the school building, and she passed by the security. of them that she had just observed a firearm in the campus, in the parking lot. Instead, she walked to a special education teacher, Mr. Houghton, and he was with someone. So she waited even longer. She did not send the text of the photo she took of the truck to Mr. Houghton until 2:10 p.m., one hour and 20 minutes after she had observed a student with a firearm on campus. Her delay and her inaction risked the safety of all students and staff on campus that day, and that was a violation of the employee handbook, the very provisions that Mr. Stewart just read from, and that Mrs. Irwin herself acknowledges that she violated. There is another relevant section of the employee handbook which states, "To ensure the safety of all persons on campus, employees who suspect there is a violation of the district's weapons policy should immediately report it to a building administrator." And Mrs. Irwin had previously claimed that it wasn't clear to whom she should have reported, whether it should be an administrator or she should call 911. The handbook makes a distinction between actually observing a district violation of the weapons policy, which Ms. Irwin did. She observed the firearm in the parking lot, as opposed to suspecting that there might have been a weapons violation. In that case, you notify an administrator. But when you see someone with a firearm on campus, you call 911. But she didn't do that. She didn't even notify an administrator. I recognize that in a grievance such as this, this is challenging for the board in that you are asked not, as Mr. Stewart stated, to put yourself in the administration's shoes. That's not your task. And I understand that that could be challenging, that you're asked solely whether the administration's firing of Mrs. Irwin violated the law, the policy, or was arbitrary and capricious. You're not asked to put yourself in the administration's shoes. But regardless, as I've stated before, there were legitimate reasons for terminating her employment. She violated the employee handbook, and she risked the safety of all those on campus that day by waiting one hour and 20 minutes before she told anyone that she had seen someone with a firearm on campus. It is laudable for a person to work for 30 years for a school district, but an employee of 30 years should be able to call 911 and should be able to tell an administrator if she sees a firearm on campus. Mrs. Irwin claims that she had never experienced anything like this before, and that it was outside the realm of her experience. Well, it should not have been, because just a few months prior, there was a similar incident on the campus of Arlington High School, where some students reported that another student was brandishing a firearm in the parking lot, and the school was placed on lockdown. So it should not have been outside the realm of experience and something that was completely unfathomable to Mrs. Irwin. Fortunately, in that situation, the students reported it. As Mr. Stewart has said, paraprofessionals may be on the lower end of a hierarchical system, which I don't necessarily agree that there is such, but if there were, students would even have to be below that. And in this case, the students had no problem with reporting that they saw a firearm on campus immediately, and the school was placed on lockdown. But in Mrs. Irwin's situation, however, no students reported the firearm. She admitted that she was the only employee who saw the firearm, and she did not call anybody, and she waited over an hour to report it to a teacher. Fortunately, no one was hurt on the Arlington High School campus on January 7, 2020. There could have been another tragedy that we have seen all too often in the news. But that is why the employee handbook directs employees to immediately report suspected weapons violations. The risk of injury or loss of life is simply too great to ignore. Mrs. Irwin claims that she possibly saved lives. How can Mrs. Irwin claim that she possibly saved lives by reporting what happened to a teacher an hour and 20 minutes after it happened, yet not acknowledge that her delay of waiting that long possibly jeopardized the very lives she claims she saved? That makes no sense. The truth is, the campus was fortunate that day to avoid a tragic situation. Mrs. Irwin asks what lessons other employees will take from this? Well, they should know that they should report a weapons violation immediately. Frankly, what lessons would the employees learn if Ms. Irwin had not been fired? That student lives are not as important as someone finishing their lunch? The district has policies and procedures in place for a reason. Student safety is paramount, and whether you are a principal or a teacher or a teacher assistant or an attendance clerk, student safety is every employee's responsibility. And Mrs. Irwin did not fulfill her responsibility to keep students safe. That's why the district initiated the See Something, Say Something campaign. Mrs. Irwin also talks about accountability, yet that is what the district has done, the administration has done, by holding her accountable for failing to timely report a firearm on campus. She talks about accountability for the district, but at the same time asks the board to overlook her not complying with the handbook and to not hold her accountable. Mrs. Irwin claims that the district was scapegoating her. Well, that's not what happened here. She jeopardized the safety of all those people that were on the campus that day, and that's a violation of the employee handbook. Her termination was holding her accountable. Mrs. Irwin also makes excuses and blames others for not reporting, and no one else called 911. As I said previously, she was the only employee who directly observed the firearm on campus that day, and she waited an hour and 20 minutes before security could then try to look at the surveillance footage to track down the student. Had she reported it immediately, security officers, SRO, administrators could have taken swift action, but her delay prevented that from happening. But when she told Mr. Houghton and sent him the photo at 2:10, he was in the security office reporting it by 2:11 p.m., one minute later. That is immediately reporting a weapons violation, not finishing your lunch and waiting and waiting again and eventually telling someone an hour and 20 minutes later. Mrs. Irwin also asks, "What if the truck did not reappear?" Great. That's an outcome that I think we could all say we would be happy with, but that's not what happened. The truck did come back, and the firearm was brought back onto campus. Had she notified administrators or security or police sooner, they could have investigated and maybe prevented the car from leaving and coming back. But besides what could have happened, we know what did happen, and that he did bring the weapon back on campus. And Mrs. Irwin's failure to immediately call 911 or to notify administrators violated the employee handbook. It also violated DH Local, because it risked the safety of all the students and staff on campus at Arlington High School that day. Mrs. Irwin's termination did not violate district policy or the law, and it was not arbitrary and capricious. Therefore, the administration asks that the board uphold the termination of Mrs. Irwin and that it deny all of Mrs. Irwin's requested relief. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So, Mr. Thomas and I do agree on one thing. The campus was indeed fortunate that day. The campus was fortunate that a special education teaching assistant just happened to be eating her lunch in her car in a school parking lot. Even though all this commotion was happening, presumably clearly visible on camera, you know, students congregating around the car in the parking lot, smoking tires and doing wheelies, Ms. Irwin described it, no one else seemed to notice it. So thank God she was in the parking lot that day, and she saw it, and she did report it. And she did help identify that vehicle. She's the one who saw it when they were viewing the footage. She's the one who saw it and said, "There it is." You know, she is a special education teaching assistant. Her job is to keep those students safe under her charge, which is a big charge, as is. And yes, we recognize everyone on campus, everyone in the school system needs to own school safety, but how much can we place on one person, honestly? You know, Mr. Thomas said there are legitimate reasons for terminating the employee. Maybe. Does that mean, is it the stance of Arlington ISD that an employee is not allowed to make a mistake over a 30-year career? Is it zero tolerance? I thought we were moving away from zero tolerance policies. Because I've got to tell you, that's going to make it hard to recruit employees if that's the message that goes out. She did not finish her lunch. Nowhere is that in the record, that's why she stayed in her car, that she finished the lunch. It is for the reasons I explained. She was just frankly paralyzed with fear, and she didn't even know if what she had seen was real. If you look at the Q and A on January 8, she said that when she told Mr. Houghton, who she perceived as her direct supervisor, when you're a special education teaching assistant, the teacher you serve is really, for all intents and purposes, the one you report to, he said, when she showed him the picture, "This looks like this is real." So obviously, that confirms she had some questions in her own mind. Was it real? The first, if you listen to that Q and A, she states, "The first question she asked Dr. Carter was, was it a real gun when they found the gun?" Okay. Thank you very much.
If you listen to the Q and A, I think it is pretty clear that Ms. Irwin strongly believed that the firearm was real. Why else would she have been paralyzed with fear? Why else would she have been scared, as she testified to in her Q and A? Even if she wasn't absolutely 100% convinced, she had a responsibility to report it, because the policy says, and the handbook says, "If you suspect." It doesn't say, "If you are 100% certain." And she certainly suspected that the firearm was real. And she used that as a reason why she stayed in her car. Whether she finished her lunch or not, she stayed in her car till the end of her lunch break and then waited an additional, I don't know how many minutes, but from 12:50 until 2:10, when it was finally reported. Thank you.
You done with time?
Yeah.
The Ms. Irwin's party used all of their time. There's 13 seconds left on Mr. Thomas's time.
Okay. You good, Mr. Thomas? Okay. So I now declare this complaint appeal closed. If there is no objection, the board will now adjourn to closed meeting under the Texas Government Code 551.071 and 551.074 to deliberate.
Do you want to ask if anyone has any questions first? Do you want to ask if anyone has any questions first?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes. So before we take the time and go into close, are there any questions from any board members of Mrs. Irwin, Mr. Stewart, and Mr. Thomas? Mr. Choppa?
Thank you, President Mays. I'd like to, I have a couple of questions for each side, and I'd like to start with counsel for Ms. Irwin. So I'm looking at the January 10 employment status letter that was provided to Ms. Irwin by Dr. Dalla.
Yes, sir.
So there's a detailed timeline in that letter that appears to be based on videotape taken by the district and timestamps on photographs and other things like that. I did not hear in your presentation and did not see in the record that you or your client dispute the timeline that's in that letter.
We do not. Mrs. Irwin helped in large measure in the Q and A construct that timeline as well, provided, you know, date stamps for when she took the picture, when she texted the picture to Mr. Houghton. So no, we do not dispute the timeline.
Okay. So then, we've got a timeline then of the truck leaves the parking lot at 12:52 p.m., Ms. Irwin sits in her car from 12:52 to 1:12 p.m., and then drives around the parking lot for one minute, returns to her parking spot, does not go back into the building until 1:30, and then doesn't contact the Special Education Department Chair until approximately 2 o'clock?
That is correct. She went in to speak with him. He was speaking with someone else at the time. She wanted privacy, and she was very differential, and she waited until he was done speaking with the other person.
Okay. So I mean, so what, I mean, what happened between 1:30 and 2 o'clock?
You were waiting for Mr. Houghton, correct?
Okay. Okay. So, you know, the question I have is, that I'm struggling with here is that it doesn't seem to me that you've got a real argument that the reporting here was immediate under board policy. So I think you're really relying on arbitrary and capricious. And so what, you know, what's your best argument as to why it was arbitrary and capricious to expect an employee who thought they saw a handgun not to wait 45 minutes after she saw that, or at least return to her parking spot to make a report about it?
Well, I think there is some lack of clarity in the expectations. Again, if you listen to that Q and A, there are three members of the administration there with Mrs. Irwin. I believe it was Ms. Reed from HR, Assistant Superintendent Buhl, and Assistant Principal Lacy. Is that correct? And if you listen to that, there's even some disagreement among them about what she should have done. So Ms. Reed, and please correct me if I'm mischaracterizing this, but they're saying, "Why didn't you call the assistant principals? Why didn't you report it in person to the assistant principals?" And then Mrs. Irwin says, "Okay, in the future, that is what I will do." And then Ms. Buhl says, or Assistant Superintendent Buhl says, "No, you call 911. No matter where you are, if you see a gun, you think you see a gun, you call 911." So it seems like there's, and if you look at the employee handbook, it says, "Report to an administrator and/or call 911." I feel like the expectations are not clear to begin with, and given the fact that there is no specific training for situations like these, you know, that's what we base our argument on.
Okay. Thank you. And the rest of my questions are for the district.
Mr. Choppa, may I respond briefly to what he said about if he mischaracterized the Q and A, and I don't believe that was intentional, but my recollection of the Q and A was that Ms. Reed was asking if Ms. Irwin had the phone numbers for administrators, as in anybody else to call, when she had said that she didn't have phone numbers for anybody to call. And I think maybe that might have been an area of confusion. But in either case, she didn't call administrators, and she did not call 911, even if she were confused about the policy.
Okay. Thank you. And the Q and A tape was provided to us. Mr. Thomas, do you know if department chairs are considered campus administration?
My understanding is they're not, but I would like to defer to some of this. Okay. I just wanted clarification. I do not believe so.
And so just, and I asked a similar question for Ms. Irwin's attorney, but the timeline's a little fuzzy on, at least from the employment status letter, exactly when she tried to contact the SPED department chair, but it appears that, based on your timeline, that she went into the building at 1:30 and walked some distance, walked past other people she could have told, but did go to the SPED department chair and then just decided to wait until he was done having a conversation with someone else.
That is my understanding. I believe from the Q and A, she said it might have taken her five or six minutes to walk from the parking lot inside the building, and at that time, it was lunch, and there were lots of students in the hallways, so it might have taken a few minutes.
Okay. And so the record and the presentations both brought up events that occurred after the report was made to the SPED department chair, and, you know, based on the record, it appears that a number of people gathered in the room where videotape is appears that a number of people gathered in the room where videotape is shown from cameras, and it was determined that the student who had received the gun and got into the truck had in fact driven back onto campus and entered the campus. So my question is, why was action not taken at that point to either place the campus on lockdown, as you described had happened prior in the year, or taken some other action in response to what appeared to be someone who had received a handgun coming back onto campus inside the building?
Yes. I do not know what was inside the minds of all the members that were inside watching the video, but I did speak with Dr. Lacy about it, and she was present that day as Dr. Dalla was off campus. And she had mentioned that, as opposed to the previous incidents where the report was made immediately and there was a firearm on campus and the student was brandishing the weapon, in this instance, they didn't know that the firearm was on campus. The information they had at the time, when they were trying to look through the surveillance footage, was the student had left campus. And so they were trying to confirm that, ascertain if he had come back, and then once he came back, they were able to identify him and saw that he was in the classroom, so they went and got him at that time.
Okay. But there was, at that point, they would have known that a student was in the building who last was seen with a handgun in their possession?
Correct. So there was suspicion that there was a firearm, may have been a firearm on campus, but they, at that point, did not know because he had left campus. He could have left the firearm off campus. It wasn't clear.
Okay. And this is outside of the record, but how was that any different than the prior episode where students witnessed somebody receiving a handgun on campus?
The firearm was present on campus when it was observed and reported. The person with the firearm did not drive off campus when it was reported?
Okay. All right. Those are all the questions I have. Thank you.
Are there any other trustees with questions from either side? Okay. I do not see any other hands raised for questions, so it is now 10:25, and we will go into closed The board concluded its closed meeting at, is that 12:05? 12:05 a.m. No action was taken in closed meeting. The board has completed its deliberation with respect to the Level 4 grievance of Jacqueline Irwin. At this time, does anyone wish to make a motion?
Madam President?
I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Will Banks.
The board, I believe the grievance has not carried her burden to show that the district violated law or policy or acted arbitrarily or capriciously. However, the grievance has shown that she did not intentionally violate policy and believe that she did act appropriately under the circumstances. Therefore, I move to affirm the decision of the administration, but that the grievance shall be eligible for rehire should she apply for a vacant position in the future.
First, I have a motion by Mr. Will Banks, a second by Ms. Fowler. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote via roll call. Dr. Raj?
Aaron Raj, I vote yes.
David Will Banks, I vote yes.
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Booby Hog, I vote yes.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Justin Chapa, I vote no.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes. So motion passes in the affirmative. The board will now return to closed session under Texas Government Code 551.071 and 551.074. At this time, I will reconvene into open session this meeting so that I may adjourn this meeting at 12:25 a.m. Thank you.